6:30 and we have completed our site visit, the first item on our agenda. And I would also like to recognize that Henry Dane has joined us here in person in the Select Board Room and Teri Ackerman is visible on Zoom. So this is a hybrid meeting and we have our remote member. And we already did call the meeting to order at 6 with a roll call vote at that time. And so now I would like to move to the consent agenda. And also to note that on the consent agenda, we have the town accountant warrant of June 23rd, 2022, the minutes of, the executive session minutes of June 13th and June 6th and, oh, and June 16th, all of those not to be released. And then general minutes of June 13th, as well as a one day special liquor license application for the Umbrella Arts Center and a letter of support for the two revolutions pathway.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
About the minutes?
Sure.
This is the third.
Well, do, first of all, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. And now that motion's on the table, any comments?
I have a comment. Would you like a second?
Well, I think, yeah, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Sorry.
We're getting into the rhythm.
Second? Who's this, who's second again, this motion?
I did.
Okay, Linda did, and I know Linda had a comment, so I'd like to recognize her.
Okay. Just a minor typo on page three of the minutes for June 13th. Under the interim town manager's report on line four, I believe it is, it talks about the population of the town managers, and I think it was meant to say the production.
Okay, thank you. So with that amendment.
Can I also make a comment on those minutes as well? On the minutes, on the, on the portion that dealt with the, the trolley.
Yeah.
One of the things that was stated at the meeting was that the marketing funds to market the trolley project would come from the funds that were saved by the delay in the implementation of it. And I think it might be good to indicate that in the minutes.
Okay. Do we want to just pull those minutes and just approve them next time? With their, with those revisions? Oh, yes, Mary?
And I'd like to make a comment in the liaison report. So I'm wondering if we could, like, flesh those out a little bit more, so actually say something substantive about what the Select Board said about the meetings that they attended.
Okay, I know that I have been pressuring for more brief minutes, but maybe we've overshot. Okay, so.
A sentence or two, because we try to keep them brief anyway.
So.
It's a delicate balance.
So is it clear enough that changes to the June 13th that we can approve as amended?
Yes, I'll work with Mike on that, and we'll get back to you at the next meeting.
All right, so we won't, we will pull those from the consent agenda. So, I don't know, do we need to withdraw and make a new motion?
Actually, it wasn't even on the consent agenda.
The minutes of June 13th.
These are all executive session.
No, no, there's a standard minutes of June 13th right at the beginning.
Oh, there they are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the June 13th, 2022 regular minutes.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Now for the interim town manager's report.
Thank you. There are two reports in your packet, the first for the week ending June 17th. In that report, we noted that we had the volunteer appreciation reception, which you were all in attendance. We had a great turnout and we today sent out a save the date for next year, May 17, 2023. That is a Wednesday evening versus a Thursday evening. I know we have a lot of boards and committees that regularly meet on Thursdays, so we moved it to Wednesday and a little closer to the conclusion of annual town meeting. In the police department, Sergeant Tia Manchuso attended training provided by the International Chiefs of Police Association, the Women's Leadership Institute. The curriculum at this program focuses on teaching participants evidence-informed leadership theories, all in the context of better understanding the unique challenges women face in the workplace. I mentioned that Tia Manchuso is a longtime employee of the police department. Her dad, Todd Manchuso, is a longtime employee of our Public Works Department, and her grandfather was a police officer in Concord. So the Manchuso family has a long history of public service here in Concord. The police chief submitted recertifications, the first batch of recertifications for officers to post this past week. The Energy and Environmental Affairs Department of the state has declared a Level Two significant drought issuance, meaning that lawn watering should be limited to one day per week or one inch per week. We had a public forum on June 16, or two public forums for the Assabett River Bridge Trail Project. They were well-attended. The first one was recorded by Minuteman Media Network and is available for view on our YouTube channel. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee completed its draft report on the Junction Park conceptual redesign. I believe that was sent out to the Select Board last Friday and that will.
And has that been posted?
It was posted today.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Also in this report are the COVID cases for the last three weeks. You can see that the number of cases is down, at least at the end of this period, to a total of 17. We had the second of, second library open house on Saturday, June 18. That was well-attended, attended also by the sculptor of the duck, Millie, that is in the children's garden, and that was a well-attended event. And I'm told that the Nancy, Nancy Schoen, the sculptor, was very moved by, by the attendance and the feedback that she received there. The library summer reading program for both children and adults is ongoing. The adult program allows participants the opportunity to win gift cards to local businesses. There's some information about the recreation programs and some training that the recreation staff has undertaken recently, and I'll just quickly go to the report of June 24th. I think the biggest news here is the announcement that the Concord Police Department earned its accreditation from the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. This is a very long process, a review of 257 mandatory standards and 125 optional standards. The accreditation process is aimed at providing accountability among agency personnel and ensuring policies are applied even-handedly, providing a statewide norm against which agencies can judge their performance, providing a basis to correct deficiencies before they become public problems. So this, this is a, really a terrific achievement by the department, and many members of the department have been working for years to, to obtain this accreditation. Some additional training notes, Lieutenant Will Rolf attended, he's a fire, Lieutenant at the Fire Department, attended a National Fire Academy Command and Control of Incident Operations. I mentioned, and I know it was, it was briefly mentioned in passing at the site visit because one of the members of that committee was directly affected by the, the gas. National Grid hit a gas line last Tuesday. We had gas freely venting into, into the AR. 12 homes were evacuated, the roads were closed for about 90 minutes. There were no injuries, luckily. And let's see, I'm probably, am I getting overtime here? There's information about the adaptive bicycle program, which are now available through the Concord Bike Share, so that's a nice addition. There are two adaptive bikes that are available, April through November. And then the additional updates on cases, again, COVID cases, we have a total of 17 as of the end of last week. So I will stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do those COVID cases include people who were in Emerson Hospital and people who were in the prison?
They include any cases that come through that, the Maven system, which is the statewide recording.
I just wonder if our numbers are so high because we have Emerson Hospital here.
I would, I'm certainly happy to check on that. I'm not sure if, if somebody is in the hospital from another community.
I don't think so. I think it's the residency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You would hope so.
Yeah.
But again, these are, these are not at all reflective of anybody taking a test at home.
Right. Unless they report it.
Unless they called the Board of Health to report it, yes.
Okay, any other questions for the town manager? All right, so next I'd like to.
Just to comment, lots and lots of good news in those two reports, and congratulations to the police department for all that hard work.
I'll just follow up with the congratulations to the police department, and I, are we still scheduled to have the police department or public safety to come in at an upcoming meeting?
Yes, next month.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we're going to have both fire and police in next month.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And so, in fact, that's what I was going to say, is I do look forward, this is the chair's remarks, that I look forward to the police chief being able to speak to what went into that accreditation process when he speaks with us next month. Two points that I'd just like to make. First, in the packet, you'll see a somewhat revised version of the Select Board goals, and that really was the output of a process that Carrie started. She, in composing her own goals, looked at ours and then tried to factor them into quarters. And I thought that that was actually a very nice enhancement to help keep us on track to meeting our goals. So what I did was I marked up our goals with those quarters. And then the other suggestion that she had was to add a values and vision statement. We had an original statement that had a whole bunch of bulleted items at the beginning, and what we did was we had put those into the respective points, into their respective sessions, sections. But what that left out was this sort of overall vision. And so she proposed a statement, I made some revisions, and, and so in the packet, you'll just see a draft of that. Okay, so this is not a topic necessarily for discussion tonight, but I'm putting that document out in the public domain and, you know, welcome comments so that, you know, we could potentially improve our goals to include these other bits of information.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
It would, it might be helpful to have another version of it reformatted by quarters.
Well, that was the way that Carrie originally did it. The downside of that is then you get less of a sense of the sort of, you know.
No, but I think, I say have it both ways.
Uh huh.
Not just have it one way or the other, but if you want to look at.
It's a spreadsheet, you hit sort.
Yeah, right, exactly. That you can look at and say, what is it we want, what is it we want to get done this quarter?
Well, actually, it could be a spreadsheet, sorted by, you know, quarter and topic and vice versa. Yeah.
When do you want us to give any input as far as, do you think the timing is appropriate for some of these and also designating the priority?
So, I mean, I think that, again, we haven't really voted on drafting this or anything, so.
I think it's not.
I would just say perhaps we should just have a topic at the next meeting or something and discuss it there.
Okay.
Okay?
Good, thank you.
The second thing that I wanted to mention was that earlier this week, we received an updated estimate for the middle school construction. And so that, there are regular intervals at which estimates are derived based upon the latest information. And so, you know, changing market conditions and costs, but also increasing levels of detail that are available in the design process. And so the last time with a schematic design estimate, the construction budget was going to be 80 million, 700,000 and change. The new one, which is for the design development estimate, is for 86 million, which means there's a gap of 5.3 million in the construction budget. So obviously, that's a sizable gap, and the committee will be meeting on Thursday morning to discuss what to do about that gap. Okay, so I just thought you all would be interested in hearing about that. And I think that those are the main points from the chair's perspective.
A mere $6 million.
5.3. Who's, okay, so the next topic on our agenda is to vote on the town manager employment agreement. So you will find in your packet the latest agreement that we have negotiated, and I do believe that Ms. LaFleur would be prepared to sign that agreement, and the question is, are we prepared to approve the agreement? So any discussion before we move to a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
You too.
Okay, so can I get a motion, please?
We muted our own clerk.
Sorry, I was muted, sorry about that. Okay. Move to approve the town manager's employment agreement between the town of Concord and Carrie A. LaFleur, as shown in tonight's packet.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, then, all in favor, actually, when you roll call vote? Take a roll call, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Sacramento, aye. And thanks to the chair for putting in the time and effort to get a good contract, and welcome to our new town.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next motion, item of business is to vote on the appropriation of excess and deficiency funds for the Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical High School. And I do believe, I see Mr. Ledoux on the line, who could, I think, speak to this, unless there's someone else. Yeah.
Well, you guys are a little early, so the school business manager was going to, oh, she is here, Nikki's here, so Nikki's here, just in case you guys want a little more inside baseball information. But any rate, let me just explain the situation as best I can, and Nikki can correct me or whatever. In FY21, the Minuteman School Committee transferred about a half a million dollars into the stabilization fund, and we just completed our FY21 audit, and our auditors flagged that as against DESI policy, that being the Department of Education, or the elementary, second and secondary education. So in their audit, they basically returned the $500,000 back to E and D, excess and deficiency, which in the miniscule world is free cash. So the intent, and the reason why we were doing this, was to put money in the stabilization capital fund to help pay for some of the campus expansion that we have talked to the Select Board about in the past. And so we, we just got this audit like less than a month ago, so first of all, we had to not only talk with legal counsel, but get a better clarification from DESI. And the solution basically is that the, that the 500,000 was returned back to E and D, and that normally you need a town meeting approval to approve a capital expenditure for a region, and, and DESI is basically saying that a, even putting money into a capital stabilization fund is a capital article. So we should have brought this to town meeting. So here we are, we now have, we, we've been planning on this money, it's the, it's the end of the fiscal year. DESI has ruled that rather than call a town meeting because excess and deficiency basically gets recertified in, in early July, that we need to take action before this fiscal year ends. And their solution was, so rather than the call of town meetings, which takes time and money, et cetera, that we're asking that each Select Board in the district endorse this transfer, and just like a capital article seeking support letters from six, at least six of the nine communities. So it was one of those kind of good intentions, but we kind of got, got nailed through, through the audit and through DESI regs. DESI never, didn't really have regs until fairly recently. A lot of, I believe, a lot of school districts were doing this during COVID, and now everybody's got kind of flagged and have to take some corrective action. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, and I probably explained it somewhat incorrectly, but Nikki can correct me if she so desires. And Nikki Andrade is our school business manager.
Well, you did a great job, Steve.
Okay, so I think that the strategy for raising capital funds was shared with us before, so it's really more the tactics here of how to, you know, put that money in the account and the auditing of it. So is there any other comments?
I have a question. If we take the 500,000 out of E and D, what percent now is E and D?
Nikki, answer that.
So as of, as our certification on July 1st, our number was 1,478,000. Part of that is returned by reducing the member assessments in FY23 to Concord. So if you see in our budget book, we planned for 650,000 of that money to be a member town assessment offset. So that would leave us with. Sorry, that looks like around, let me just do the number one more time. 3.7.
Good, okay. The reason I'm asking is I know that the Concord-Kyler District runs at about 5%. So the fact that this school has an opportunity to expand and increase enrollment would justify moving it to capital.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So we have an item that we need to vote on here, and so I guess I'll ask for a motion unless there are other questions. Okay?
Move to positively endorse the Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School Committee to appropriate $500,000 from certified excess and deficiency to be transferred to the capital stabilization fund.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Sacramento, aye.
And I believe that the, the superintendent sent the town manager kind of a sample letter of endorsement.
Yes, I have it on, in my packet here, and I will sign it before the end of the evening.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Okay.
Okay, and now, do we have Bruce Thompson on the line, or is it still early for him?
He's here.
He's here.
I'm here.
We'd like to take this up a little bit early, just so we can get completed with this quicker. So let me just describe why we have this agenda item. So in July, or perhaps August, we still are working on that, we plan to have a discussion about next steps for the 2229 Main Street. As you may recall, last year, there was a report of the NMI StarMet Committee that described options for the site. And also, we have recently received a couple of letters from the 2229 Main Street Committee, as well as the former co-chairs of the NMI StarMet Committee about kind of the status and, and risks and other details related to the site. So as background for those discussions, I thought that it would be great to have the consultant who's leading the cleanup process to provide us with information about the cleanup, as well as other details. This is partly because he gave a similar presentation at the Board of Health last week. It was very well-received, and again, I don't believe that the Select Board has had a chance to look at the information at this level of depth and that it will really help us, I think, in future discussions, so.
Can I ask two questions before we start on this? One is, are these consultants employed by the town?
No.
Who, who are they working for?
Well, the EPA is.
EPA?
Yeah.
And has the 2229 Committee reviewed this report that's being presented to us?
I know that this material and more has been presented to the 229 Main Committee.
And do they, do they have an opinion or a take?
They work on an ongoing basis about these, the content that's in here.
Okay. Because I think it's important for us to know what their opinion is of this, this work that has been done in their area of, of interest.
Yeah, perhaps Mr. Thompson can speak to that in more detail.
Thank you.
Well, if I could just add, the 2229 Committee also sent a letter about a week ago to the Select Board, which everyone should have received. If you do not receive that, please let Matt or myself know.
So I'm Bruce Thompson. I am the project coordinator for the Nuclear Metals or the StarMet site. I've been working in that role on this project since 2003, and I actually work for the two former owner-operators of the facility up through about 1972. And what I want to do, and I know, I've got a bunch of slides, I'm going to move through relatively expediently. Certainly I'll jump back and answer any questions you have at the end, but I just kind of want to get you through the regulatory history and how the site got to be where it is, what we've already done at the site, and then, and then the work that we're doing right now. And then I think the main event tonight is really kind of the post-remy considerations and some of the things I've been working on for a while with your reuse committee. So as a timeline, this site started getting used, 1959, Nuclear Metals moved out from the hood building at MIT. They were a Manhattan Project specialty metals, R and D firm, and they had an Atomic Energy Commission license to possess both enriched and natural uranium, depleted uranium and thorium. The employees bought the company out in 1972, and they started making depleted uranium penetrators for the military. That would be 20 and 30-millimeter shells, 105-millimeter shells for tanks. They also made armor and counterweights, and they made thoriated tungsten rods. You know, the, the site they went through history, they, they brought up drums from one of their other facilities of uranium tetrafluoride. The site got actually placed on EPA's Superfund List in 2001. And after, you know, going through changes in their license, they ended up leaving the site in November 2011, and that's also when the license was terminated. And that's also when the license was terminated. And I have not spoken to StarMet or subsidiaries actually since since kind of they handed me the keys when they left the site in in 2011. On the regulatory front, this site kind of got on the radar in 1980 when they found that's 10,000 parts per billion or 10 parts per million of a coronated solvent in one of the onsite production wells. That started 20 years of investigation under under state law. Your community groups got active here pretty quickly after the site kind of hit the radar. And I've been working with Crew. They've been here since 1989. I've been working with them since 2003. There's been a variety of remedial work already done at the site and that have actually really addressed some real significant risk pathways, including the DEP removing a lot of drums and depleted uranium metal from inside the building, variety of EPA removal actions. Under my watch, we've done the the remedial investigation, the feasibility study, we've emptied and demolished the buildings, we've contained groundwater going under the river to the Acton Municipal Drinking Water Wells. And we've started the remedial design and remedial investigation or remedial action, excuse me. I'll talk a little bit more about. This is a site in 1984. You know, about four and a half acres of two-story industrial buildings for the most part. This is when they were running a number of ships shifts making depleted uranium penetrators. This holding basin, think of it as a lagoon. It's a nice kind of blue green because the amount of copper that was disposed in there also with depleted uranium and neutralizing sludges. So that's an area that's that's now become a real source area for us. This fagin bog is yeah, it is a blue lagoon, not one to wade in. The bog is a beautiful feature and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And over here, there's an area we call the sweeping piles. They appear to be about, you know, eight to 10 yard dump piles, we think excavated out of the cooling water pond. Around the site, we've got, you know, the Thoreau Hills, we've got the Cranberry Wayne Condos, Minuteman Arc, Black Birch, Camp Thoreau, Children's Day Camp. So we we've been pretty sensitive to this since we were doing the RI and we found, you know, archery ranges out from Camp Thoreau nearby where we were putting in monitoring wells. So we're trying to be fairly focused on what we do on site. Back in 2004, five, when we were doing the investigation, we took samples basically right up to our property line and just indicative of, you know, kind of the level of effort we did across the 46 acres, variety of different types of media, don't need to worry about it. When we were 2004, we we were given this picture on the left. That's a picture of drums and other materials buried in the ground by then Nuclear Metals with Atomic Energy Commission approval. Right after we got started on the project, EPA said, we want those out of the ground. On the right, that's my team in there and supplied air with unknowns. You you kind of have to be as careful as you can. And we took all that material out and went to an offsite disposal location. I mentioned the 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 state came in and got rid of these drums of of uranium tetrafluoride or what's called so-called green salt. Lower left picture is what that material looks like. Upper left is some penetrators. That's actual chunks of DU metals sitting in disposal bins. And then, you know, when I walked through the buildings back in the early 2000s, it was pretty scary. There was just these piles of drums everywhere. And that was a huge effort by the state to get rid of that material. I mentioned StarMet kind of handed my company the keys in 2011. We had already had an agreement set with EPA to do a removal action and get rid of the buildings. This is the sort of thing we encountered when we walked in. You know, the yellow chair is near and dear to my heart because I was told that, you know, don't sit down on them. They're contaminated. They never got rid of computer equipment because they all had a little bit of DU dust in it. This is some of the equipment that we carefully dismantled and took apart. We emptied these buildings completely with all material disposed of safely offsite. Much of the work in personal protective equipment that looked like what this ensemble you see on the right. And then eventually we came in and we, after we had all the equipment out, we took the buildings down. You can see a mist, kind of like a what, snow machine gun out of ski area. If you've seen those, what we're doing is we're blowing mist. You you kind of suppress the dust. You can see it in the lower left also. We had no, we we did both personal protective area or, you know, breathing zone monitoring. We did area monitoring and perimeter. We never saw any dust or indications of exposure or contamination in our in our perimeter monitoring. So we were able to take the buildings down without issues. So we're very comfortable being able to take the soil out in the future. This is what the site looks now. It's got a temporary plastic cover over the former building slabs. That went on in about 2016 and it's been sitting there pending us removing that cover and then those slabs as part of the remedy. The work that we're embarked on now was documented in EPA's document in 2015 called a record decision. That's the legal document that sets up what are the unacceptable risks to human health or the environment posed by the site? What do we have to do to achieve to to clean it up? It also sets the legally enforceable cleanup levels. And of note for this site is that the record decision sets the cleanup levels assuming future residential use. So the most stringent level EPA could have chosen to go commercial or drill and that would be a less stringent cleanup, but they went with future residential as the assumption. The work I'm doing now is governed by a consent decree. Think of it as a court order entered by the Federal Court for the District of Massachusetts. And it's accompanying kind of a technical document called a statement of work. And together, that requires the funding and and the work that we're doing. So what we're doing is called the remedial design remedial action. For the extent of this work, EPA will oversee it with input from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And as it goes on forward, you know, the consent decree requires EPA to look at this site every five years and ensure that it's still, the the remedy remains protective. So if any new contaminants are discovered or something new comes up, the consent decree essentially has what you can think of as a reopener that could require us to come back and relook at the site. The the $125 million budgeted work that I'm doing is really kind of five different projects. First of them is excavating an offsite disposal of impacted soils and sediments, the building funding, subslab soil and then restoration. And I'll show you a little bit about that. There's a second component that's called in situ sequestration, which is think of it as we're precipitating uranium as a stable mineral, taking it out of the groundwater. And we're doing that in the holding basin, in the overburden groundwater, and we're also looking at it in bedrock. We've got a physical containment of that blue lagoon, our holding basin with a wall that will go 80 feet or so down to bedrock and then like a landfill cover. And then we've got a variety of groundwater treatment. So for the soils, we're talking on the neighborhood of 82,000 cubic yards. So, you know, 120,000 tons, a few thousand truckloads of material that will come out of the site to get us down to residential levels. In reality, this won't be any more truck traffic than we already did when we took out 1,000 truckloads and we got rid of the buildings. And the reason why is we're talking six to 10 trucks per day of material. So there's no real stress on Route 62. We avoid main streets, we avoid traffic and rush hours and bus and when school buses are moving. So it'll just be a kind of a prolonged process. And it also involves us showing EPA that and SDP that we've met the cleanup levels. Then we backfill and we restore the site. Across this 46 acre site, this is just kind of a pictograph of our depleted uranium concentrations from years of sampling. And if you think of it as a heat map, green is less than cleanup level. And you can see over at like say at the fence line or the property line by Thoreau Hills, we don't have any exceedances. That's why we were not out sampling in those properties. As you move in closer to the buildings, we have a lot more impacts. And that's because the uranium, you know, what what came out of their stacks actually settles pretty close to the buildings where it was emitted. The other main driver for us in cleaning up this site is PCBs where we have a cleanup level of one part per million. And again, we have impacts in and around the building. There are transformers in here around the cooling water pond. And then over in what we call the sweeping piles. So there were PCBs in those kind of little dump piles out there. So right now, the colored zones are what are design efforts that are going in with EPA that are being reviewed by the various community groups. So this is what we're looking at digging out and remediating. Largely, we dig out until we hit the cleanup level or 10 feet below ground surface. There are a couple of areas where we know there's contamination deeper. We're actually looking at that in our design and deciding whether we're going to chase depleted uranium 20 feet deep. And right now I think we are. This is what it looked like when we were out in in and around doing our field work over the last couple of years. The the this this plastic zone, this is the holding basin. So the drill rigs up on the edge of it, cracking a drill rig down, removing the plastic cover so we can get down to the bottom and collect samples. It's our team there on the cooling water pond and then collecting various soil samples. So we've been, we've had 20 to 30 people there on a daily basis for a while. And now we're down to a reasonable five or six. The in situ sequestration involves mixing a, it's basically a fish bone meal. That's a calcium phosphate reagent. And what it does is it complexes with uranium and makes a urinal phosphate mineral. It's a technology that we have kind of borrowed from the Department of Energy out of their Sandia and Pacific Northwest Labs where they proved this. Proof of concept studied during, you know, 2008, 2010 range. And then we've done further site specific work to to kind of get the reagents and their concentrations. The proof of the pudding is going to be monitoring it in groundwater. So at the time of EPA's record decision, this was the concept. Here's the holding basin on the lower right. This is the extent of depleted uranium in the overburden. And we're looking to inject this material through the entirety of the holding basin and then through this down gradient plume. And right now we're looking at the isotopically natural uranium plume in bedrock. And I'll talk more about that in a moment. Again, just looking and so all these little dots with flags are locations of monitoring wells in the overburden. And so the depleted uranium plume is pretty short. It's constrained to the immediate down gradient area of the holding basin and the non-detects throughout. And so we inject this material, think of it like 15 foot centers, a pincushion of the site. And we're injecting at various depths below ground surface. And we'll actually be able, we've done this drilling around the the drill, the injection point would be in the middle of this. And then we drilled it different distances out. We can see it in the soil. But as I mentioned, for our pilot study, you know, here's injection points in the orange. And then we're measuring concentrations over time at these blue monitoring wells down gradient. That portion of our study is going to be done end of the summer and then we're going to have what we need to design this part of the remedy and move forward. The holding basin, the blue lagoon, basically the the we, the goal here is to physically both physically contain it as well as kind of chemically contain it. Kind of real quick, this is what it looked like when it was the bluest, right? It was full of this sludge with nitrate and copper depleted uranium and lime from their neutralization process. And that stuff leached all the way down to the top of rock about 80 feet deep. So that's my aerial picture. This is what it looked like when they dug out about 8,000 yards of sludge. And then on the floor right, this is what it looks like right now with a temporary cover put over it to minimize that leaching. Our goal is basically put these walls down to the top of rock and physically contain this area and put a similarly impermeable cover below ground surface so that this area is entombed basically as well as chemically treated. This is where we are with our pre-designed work with Haley and Aldrick. It's it's a little different shape, working with our contractors, digging these walls in. We'd like them to be more of a more of a box. They're easier to install. And from some of our modeling work, you know, reduce flux, if you will, by more than 99.9%. That's basically our, the the one of our targets.
Just about a minute away.
To put this concrete wall, you can see these red teeth here. Basically, this is going to chew a slot in the ground. It's going to get backfilled with cement is how you would visualize this part of the remedy. And here's a kind of our cartoon schematic of how it goes in. If you've been in any of the buildings down in the new Seaport area where the parking garages are underground and that's typically below the water table, this is the same sort of design concept that we're going to do with this site. I mentioned we're treating groundwater. Principally, we have some solvents and then a different type of contaminant called 1,4 dioxane. When EPA selected the remedy, this was the vision. We would have some extraction wells and kind of cut off and treat this material. The dark purple, white purple, whether it's an overburden or bedrock. And then I talked about the uranium earlier. This is what our our monitoring wells look like in the overburden. We've already, we've got an extraction well. We've been running on this side of the river since 2016 and it's protecting the acid bed wells that are on the far left side. One of our surprises since we've started work really in 2020 and we've put in a lot more monitoring points is that the bedrock dioxide plume is a little more extensive than we previously knew from the RI. So we've been designing remedial work to try to address that issue. In cross section, you know, far left here is the holding basin. And then the kind of the yellow is the overburden or think of it as the sands and the soils. And the gray is the bedrock. And this is fractured granite and nice. And we have contamination 200 feet into that fractured rock. It makes it a very challenging remedial scheme. If you extend out from the site, then over here is where the river is. On the far right out here is where the Town of Acton water supply wells are. And we have an extraction well right. We're actually going to install, we've got another point that we're going to start pumping on right in here. And we're installing a new one. This is that dioxane in the purple and then our bedrock uranium plume in the kind of the orange. Kind of dot maps, shorter plume in the uranium, but also down 200 feet into the bedrock or I'm sorry, not 200, 150. Some of the work we did last fall included pumping extraction wells that are located on the 229 Main Street site. And then also across the street, this BEW5. And right now, our immediate vision is we're going to hook up BEW5 in a new well here and run a pipeline basically under the river to our existing treatment system that's on Knox Trail. We're going to take these wells on site and we're building a new treatment system that we're actually putting the foundation in right now. And we're going to run these bedrock wells for at least the next three to four years. I know there was a question about PFAS and back when we started our groundwater work, actually, we've sampled both 2019 and 2021. We have no hits of PFAS and overburden associated with the site. There's a couple of hits over near the acid bed production wells, but nothing in a transect from the site going over. In bedrock, we have one location right here that where we had PFAS detected. We installed a new well immediately adjacent to it. So the GZW 7-2 is where we had detected some PFAS. Our new well was BS 7-2. We don't have the PFAS. We have similar concentrations of uranium and of 1,4 dioxane. We concluded that some of there were some Teflon seals in GZW 7-2. It's not, there's not a PFAS issue at NMI. And our next step is to abandon that well. A lot of our work and we've had some meetings with your town reuse committee, EPA's consultant and a few others. You know, my vision is the project coordinator, so I'm responsible for getting the remedy. Um you know, my vision is the project coordinator, so I'm responsible for getting the remedy that's that that we're designing, getting getting that completed, setting us up. And and at this point, I'm still going to be managing the long-term operations and maintenance. Um somebody I would love for somebody to look at reusing the site, uh acquiring it uh after we're done with the remedies. So probably five to six years out. We have ongoing responsibility, or I'll say I do as the representative, as the general contractor for the settling defendants. Uh if somebody takes the property and they want to build new buildings over an area where there's volatiles in the groundwater and there's a potential for vapor intrusion, then we would be responsible providing that mitigation. Uh part of what we need an owner of the property for is to in uh basically implement what's called institutional controls or deed restrictions on the property. Um I'll talk about those in a next slide. Uh long term, there's going to be monitoring. So there's going to be, there are some monitoring wells on the site. We got to keep some of them and we'll sample those routinely, make sure things are progressing as expected. There'll be some maintenance on the holding on the holding basin. And um if we have a pump and treat system running, we'll continue to operate that pursuant to my current consent decree into the foreseeable future. Uh I think this is actually from your own town reuse review, but I'll just repeat it on the far right in and around the sphagnum bog is basically going to be uh you know, recreational and or just restricted area. Uh that's appropriate. You're going to want to have a setback area around the the bog. Uh this B area is where the holding basin is. Uh the controls will actually be really driven by the final extent of the wall and the cap. So we have to complete construction there for you to know what, you know, the real limits are, but that's a concept. We're going to, we're going to end up excavating the sediment out of this cooling water pond. I expect that'll be available as future stormwater detention. Um this A1 area is really the serious future reuse. Um uh in that area, I, you know, we're not anticipating any restrictions other than future use of groundwater. Uh and I've, you know, we've heard discussions about these other uh yellow areas. I think those are really up to the future owner. Um our work is is uh moving along quite well uh for a Superfund site. We've done pre-designed investigation for a couple of our different components. Those are in review both with EPA. As I've done for basically almost the last 20 years and you know, we we as soon as we get EPA's thumbs up, we we share these documents with the community groups and then we meet with them and talk about, you know, their comments, their issues. We're going to be moving ahead and 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 hopefully doing some, almost some pilot study soil excavation maybe late this year. Um and as I said, you know, basically four to five years, I think the site would be ready for some level of of town reuse. I know one of the questions and kind of really outside my pay grade in Bayou Wicke, but I looked at it because I had to negotiate the access uh was the various liens on the property. And this is the, this is a table I put together when I was making sure I could go demolish the buildings because some of these mortgages were secured with uh property that's now in a landfill, but you know, that's the nature of the beast. Um I I let me pause there and then, you know, first of all, questions about the remedy? And then, you know, how can I help you understand what we're trying to accomplish over here under the Superfund program?
Yes, uh questions from the board. I have a few if others that aren't ready or Linda, you had some?
Well, why didn't you start and then?
Okay, um so one thing is it sounded like the sequestration approach that you're using is somewhat experimental. I mean, yeah, so I mean, I guess while there's a proof of concept, you you don't really know how effective it will be?
Well, so so we did, we we during the feasibility study, so again, you know, 2010, 2012, we used packed columns with this appetite material and got 99.999% removal of depleted uranium. We did.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah. And we we did, we we did a wide variety of studies and showed that it was actually converted to a stable urinal phosphate mineral. Um so now our next phase is we've done uh at kind of lower dosing levels, we've done that in a lab at Hazen Labs out in Colorado. And again, showed excellent removal. Now we've moved to a field pilot where we've actually injected this material in the ground uh in lenses. And now we're looking at these wells that are shown in blue down gradient. And so we're not just looking for, you know, really the the real proof of pudding is a change in the depleted uranium concentration. But we're also looking at these other um total and dissolved metals and geochemical parameters that will show us if it's working. So we have pretty good confidence. I think, you know, EPA has gotten people from Colorado School of Mines and USGS involved in review. As have we, a and we think um this this is really a good approach.
Yeah, I mean, it would be a breakthrough if you could do it because you don't have any other way to get the stuff out of there, right?
Right, right. And and we've also tested a second media along with the with with the the fish bone, which is a zero valent iron, which is another form of complexation of the uranium. And it also showed uh good success. We're kind of trying both, uh throwing the kitchen sink, if you will, at it.
Right. And then the next thing is you said it's like five to six years out before the property could be developed, it sounds like. But in you, but that from a acquisition standpoint, it would be good for it to be acquired sooner than that?
Well, the, you know, I'm operating under a a access agreement that the former, you know, the StarMet CMI entity signed with us. And uh then I also got in parallel kind of an EPA consent order, a unilateral order that that gave us access. We did that back when we were demoing the buildings. And that allows us to do anything we need to do to basically implement the remedy. So think of it as I have free rein to do soil excavation or or tear things down or do what we need. To do these institutional controls, they'd be done under Massachusetts law as a notice of activity and use limitation. And to legally do that, you need a property owner to sign off on it. So in a couple of years, EPA is going to be poking me saying, okay, how are we going to do these ICs that are promised under the consent decree? You know, if there's no owner, we'll have to find another way. If the town's owner would make it easier.
So it's like a couple of years out that you would. Yeah, need a, need an owner. Okay. Um and then um I guess too, you're putting in some additional wells because like for the dioxane, it sounds like there's still some unknowns, I guess, about how some of that is propagating?
The only area where I have any unknowns is up here in kind of the upper right. Uh we put in this well BS 50. That was supposed to be clean. And of course, as this happens in in field geology, hydrogeology, it wasn't. Uh so these these two additional bedrock wells, you know, hopefully one of these is going to be clean. Um I know there's been some building going on. We haven't installed these up here. I think this area where we're really kind of in the jugular of both uranium contamination and the um the the 1-4 dioxane, I think we're about as well delineated as any bedrock site I've worked on in New England. And you know, I've I've been doing this for 30 years. So we've we've expended the the investigatory efforts. Some of these monitoring wells we've put in are you know, 150, $200,000 efforts by the time you drill them, you you instrument them, you test them. And I I don't want to say we've been insane, but we've we've really done a level of effort here that we thought was appropriate uh both for the magnitude of the site and then as we found new things. So I I I think we're well delineated. Uh what the real challenge is, is if you think of the, you know, almost paper thin fractures in granite and it's got contamination at parts per billion, say, we have a high of 40 parts per billion and we have to get down to 0.46 parts per billion. It's at the level of technical practicability just to to kind of clean up the bedrock. But that's one of the things that over the next three, four years with EPA, we're that's why we're going to go put in this pumping system and and try it out. We're also looking at some in situ approaches and see if they would be feasible.
Yeah, but the the risk is really to groundwater, right?
Yeah, so the i- i- in in reality is say, there can be no use of groundwater until we meet, you know, the cleanup levels, which are drinking water levels. And meanwhile, you know, if if um the the skating rink here is served by water from Acton, I think these other houses uh and commercial industrial facilities along here are on city water. So it's a prohibition on future use. I don't think there's an actual impact on
Okay.
building, building buildings or anything else.
Okay, thank you. And then uh the one last thing is I heard a comment about natural uranium. I assume you don't have to clean up the natural uranium if you find it.
Yeah, no. Uh so so there's uh here's kind of the halo, the of isotopically natural. So uranium, you know, is typically open and natural uranium, you have a blend of them. Uh when we're making fuel rods, we want the fissionable fraction, which is U235. And at DOE facilities, you end up with uh what's left over is the quote, the depleted uranium, the DU. It just means there's more U238. There is some process that occurred where we have, you know, upwards of 130 parts per billion of isotopically natural uranium in the bedrock. The drinking water level is 30. Uh so it could have been nitrate moving through from disposal that occurred up in this um lagoon. Their carbonate makes uranium more mobile. It doesn't really matter. It it exceeds the drinking water level and we're looking at it as part of our remedial requirements.
Okay, thank you. Uh questions from other board members?
So so Bruce, um I've been um following your reports for a little while here over a a couple of years. Um I think today you started out by mentioning um that you work for former owners. Can, did I understand you correctly?
Yeah, yeah.
I misspoke earlier. It's the the work is being overseen by the EPA. He's not working for the EPA.
So can you just rename those, please?
Yeah, uh there it's Textron and Whittaker.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And um in terms of the length of the pilot um study being only four months, uh can you speak to that in terms of the duration of that?
Yeah, um back up. So from where we injected to these nearest down gradient wells, or actually here here between these two sets of wells, that's about a one month travel time for groundwater. And so we, you know, we we expect to see the reaction, if you will, or the change at these immediate down gradient wells. And then at this next set and similarly in our second line of uh treatment. You know, this is what we propose to EPA. If if it's not working, you know, first of all, we can extend it longer. Um if it's not working at all, then we're we're we're, you know, still kind of bound to come back and look at the right remedial alternative.
Okay. Um and and then I I think you um mentioned that um, you know, there's the requirement from EPA at least uh to have to monitor every five years. And just like uh the recent um emphasis on PFAS uh being relatively new for communities that you would um pursue any other contaminants that are discovered. So do you wait for, is it necessary to wait for that five year period or or can there be intervention prior to that?
Yeah, so so I think two different things. One is we already have an established long-term groundwater monitoring program. And right now, in addition to kind of focused monitoring, like for this pilot study, we're we're doing an array of wells every year. And and so that'll be actually a future report to EPA, which is what's the right monitoring. And yeah, in in managing Superfund sites around New England, you know, uh sometimes EPA says, comes to us and says, we want you to sample. We want you to do it soon for some reasons. Uh and some clients uh tell us to just go ahead and do it because we see the writing on the wall. At this site in 2019 voluntarily, um actually, before the RDRA consent decree was entered, we voluntarily did a site-wide program, I think 170 monitoring wells. And we did a cross section for PFAS because I wanted to know if it was present before we really got into the remedial design. Because it's not a complete upset condition, but it changes what we're doing. So at this site, as an example, we voluntarily took it on because we wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be an issue. And and you know, to our good luck, it's not.
Okay.
Future, future emerging contaminants EPA absolutely identifies. And I'll say my normal practice is I'd rather be ahead of it so I can be reactive rather than be kind of pressed into it by EPA. That's my, just my personal philosophy.
Okay, thank you. I I I was asking that um because I was trying to relate it to the recent EPA study about a year ago or maybe less than a year ago, that several of us um had a chance to participate in for the Acton.
Yep.
Yeah, so so, okay. Um and the other thing is I may be misremembering, so please correct me uh if I am. But it seems that this lien list um that is included in this packet is shorter than the one that we may have seen a couple of years ago.
Um uh could be. I I I honestly, like I said, I it it was, it was noted out. Yeah, I asked about, you know, things I should prep for for this. And again, while it's it's obviously not in my daily work to try to clear liens, this is from my research I did a few years ago and I haven't updated because I haven't had need to in all honesty.
Okay. And I I I know that um either there is a some discussion or will be discussion with um council regarding this, so.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, subsequent discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll 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 say that the, from my experience, you know, so so under this consent decree, you know, and actually, you know, for all my prior work here, we've negotiated and worked with the government to essentially front load or pre-fund our work. So we're never inhibited by the budget cycle. So right now uh I have over $100 million in the bank to fund the RDRA work we're doing. I think the DOJ lien is is there to secure the site, um you know, it I I I think if nobody steps up and takes the property, that DOJ lien is what keeps StarMet from coming back after, you know, we, the taxpayers and and others have spent, you know, $200 million on remediation. We don't want to give them back a clean 46 acre parcel. So I think that's the I think that's the uh what the DOJ holds out until somebody else stands up and says they want to take it. And then I think that lien is probably negotiable because we will have done the remediation and that's what that uh lien was eventually initially purposed for.
Okay. And then one last question, if I may.
Sure.
Um in in um again, I I just looking for an update on Area A2. Um has any further clarification about whether you will use that area for backfill been determined?
No. So so you know, we were looking at another, and if they end up getting approval and excavating, we we're actually set up to take their material and stockpile it um uh on site. If we don't get it, we'll find backfill somewhere else. And and the the feedback we got is that there there wasn't an appetite in the town to to use backfill from A2. So we took that off our planning horizon right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hartman.
I've got a question. Bruce, thank you for your presentation. Um I'm a scientist, so I'm not a scientist. So a lot of this went right over my head, but I do have some probably beginner questions to ask you. And the first one is, um if I know that there's a lot of, you have post-remy considerations here. How much of this is, will be a burden on the town if we decide to take ownership? And how much of this would be done regardless of who the owner is?
Uh all, all of the operations and maintenance, the monitoring, everything else i- is baked in. We have to do that regardless. Um the, I don't even want to say it's a burden, you know, the, some of the planning I would do if I hear the town is really going to reuse it is looking at our long-term monitoring array, converting monitoring wells into what's, you know, like a flat flush mount. So it's not interfering with reuse, uh really trying to plan around that.
Okay, then my second question is how much of our reuse plans would influence your remediation? So how much?
Okay.
Please remove yourself if you're not speaking.
None. Clean up the site to residential requirements, do anything. We'll clean up the residential requirements regardless.
Okay, but what about vegetation or anything like that?
Yeah, it would affect my restoration. Uh if you think of like where the building, if you think of where the building slab was, if you're going to come in and build buildings, I don't want to. I don't want to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars planting trees and shrubs.
Exactly. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dane?
I'm not, I just wonder how much of this information is, is useful to us in terms of helping us make a decision about what the town is, is going to do with regard to this property. I think you, you mentioned what might happen to the property if the town did not take ownership. Did I hear you say that it would revert to nuclear metals?
No, no, I don't even know if there's anybody standing there.
If the town did not take ownership, what would, what would happen to this property? Or, or don't you know?
I, I don't know. I, I think I have the access and the rights needed to continue to conduct the remedy and it would probably sit as an open lot.
It would just, the remediation would continue.
But I mean, eventually, I think that, you know, that lien from the Department of Justice, that they could potentially then convey the property to some other owner, you know, after, of course, dealing with these other liens and everything else, but they would probably be in the first position to be able to.
To determine where, what happened to it and assuming they could find somebody who would take it off their hands.
Yeah, forty six acres of residential clean property in Concord.
Well, with all the risks that go along with it. So.
I think that's a risk some people would be willing to take.
Well, so I guess my next question is that what protections are there that are available to the owner of this property with regard to future obligations to maintain and clean it up? And with regard to liability to third parties such as people whose groundwater is contaminated from the pollution on this site?
Yeah, I, my, I, I think, you know, you, you have, I'm sure inside and outside council that are looking at the town's liabilities. I know there's ways under tax takings and kind of innocent property defenses that you should be able to avoid circula actions or liability for anything you do, provided the town doesn't, you know, dispose of materials on the site that would cause that. So I think there's a process to do that. I just, yeah, I.
Yeah, okay.
Process you guys go through.
I think that that's where we would work with council.
So.
We're, we're obligated to continue the cleanup of, you know, kind of whatever comes up under the consent decree. And there's not a, there's not an endpoint to it is what I would use.
So if the town were to take the title to the property, you would continue to do the cleanup work at somebody else's expense?
Correct.
Yeah, he has money in the bank to do it right now.
Right.
Well, that eventually, the money gets exhausted.
Yeah.
But, but this consent decree is unlike, you know, I do a lot of work for a hundred percent private parties. And in this one, there's a vision that if the estimates are wrong, and most are, we can go back and get more money from, from both my clients and from the federal government who's paying, you know, more than the lion's share. We did that repeatedly under the RIFS. It was originally budgeted at seven million. We ended up, you know, after multiple phases at about sixteen million. And there's a process embedded in the consent decree where I go through a documentation process to get more. We've done the same thing on the groundwater removal action. We didn't have to on the building because we finished about twenty million dollars under budget for that. But this is not a one time deal under this consent decree. The federal government has an ongoing obligation, as do my clients.
Have you seen instances where the use of formerly contaminated properties was successfully controlled by zoning, zoning measures adopted by the municipalities? I'm not talking about having like a radioactive zone.
Right.
But a zoning which would enable the town to control the use of it without taking the risks of owning it.
I haven't seen it quite done like that. Usually a town zoning, I, I've had a buffer ordinance that, that prohibited, you know, installation of private wells in a zone close to groundwater contamination that was done as a town ordinance. But usually, you know, the, what EPA and, and the state are going to look for is these notice of activity and use limitations as a deed restriction. And if there's any zoning, it's, it's more of like a belt and suspenders. It's another layer, not in replacement of.
Okay. And, you know, we have to recognize too that Bruce is, that's not his field.
That's right. He's the only guy we have right now.
Yeah, yeah, we will have other people that we can speak with. Did you have any other questions?
No, I, I, no, I think I've, I think I've confirmed my own ignorance.
All right. So then, Ms. Ackerman, did you have any questions while you're on the line here?
Well, just a couple of comments. So I think tonight we're seeing the underlying remedy and the science and some of the next steps now that the board needs to take are working with council on the liens and working with the town manager on the insurance. We have a lot of questions in those areas. When Linda was chair a while ago, a number of us went on site visits and I found that really, really helpful. Looking at the diagrams is one thing and the maps, but seeing it was a whole different thing. So I asked Bruce at the Board of Health meeting if he would conduct another site visit for this current select. And he graciously agreed. And I just would really recommend for the new members, and I would like to go again, I'll probably learn a lot even going the second time. But I'm hoping that we can set up a site visit sometime in the next six to twelve months because it will, a lot of questions will come up when you see the property. And then Bruce and the others can answer it right on site.
Yeah, I recommend that as well. And I thought that the conservation resources that are on the site are quite special and should be seen.
How do we go, how do we go about setting that up?
Just contact me, you know, I have a daily presence at the site. I'll come up and we'll tour year round. And, you know, it's not a joke, you know, talking about the site is like a drink from a fire hose. So we're, we're, we're here to try to help, you know, educate you, site walks, further meetings, details, whatever you need to make a good decision.
Right. And I, I don't know that we need a formal select board site visit for this because I think the majority of the board has, has toured the property. So perhaps that should just be individual board members could make an arrangement, perhaps two of you could go together or something like that. Okay, thank you also. I guess I have a couple of minutes here that I could just take a question or two from the public, you know, realizing that we will be discussing this project in, in more depth later and especially the kinds of decisions that the town will have to make. But with regard to the description of the project itself, the, the actions that are being taken on the site, if there are any members of the public that have questions or comments, please use your raise hand feature and identify yourself. Anybody? Yes, I see a hand up. Who's, Diane Proctor, would you please unmute yourself and speak?
Yes, thank you so much. This has been so informative and helpful. How can citizens?
Diane, can you give your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, fifty seven Sudbury Road in Concord. I apologize. Bruce, how can citizens or groups of citizens have, take advantage of an opportunity to visit this site and what's most convenient and easiest for you?
So, so, you know, we, we've been doing briefings as we go through the, the real nitty gritty of the, of the details of the site with both the Citizens Group Crew and the Town's Two Two Nine Main Street Committee and Green Acton. So, you know, contacting them and getting on our, our list and then you can participate in those meetings. You know, I guess we'd be, if there was a community outreach where there was citizens that really wanted to come see what the place looked like, we'll set up a meeting with you. That's, you know, we'll, we'll find a day this summer and tour year round. It's not a big deal.
Thank you, thank you so very much.
Okay.
Hey, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, I don't see anyone. So I think, thank you, Mr. Thompson, for your presentation. I think it was very good background for us. And now we will move on to our next agenda item.
Thanks all. Good night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is to vote on the language for the ballot question for a debt exclusion vote at the September sixth, twenty twenty two special election. So Ms. Lefleur, do you want to just tell us a little bit about?
So at the annual town meeting, the town voted a project for the regional school district. It was voted as excluded debt, as is the, the practice for any capital project at the school. We did schedule the, the vote to be concurrent with the primary.
Goodness.
The, the, the language is in the packet. It's, it's fairly simple. We just went through this with the middle school project. So you know that the, the wording does not include the specific dollar amount. It just describes the project.
Okay.
When will the work happen? Next year?
You know, that, that I don't know. It's probably likely that it would be in the spring.
Okay.
So I have one question. Since Article thirty six was voted on at the town meeting, I'm wondering if this ballot language will be affected by having a pro and con statement represented with it?
Probably not because I'm not sure that has fully been through the process. I'm, I'm not sure if that's something that requires some additional sign off by the Attorney General.
Well, I mean, the Attorney General certifies, you know, the, the votes, but I think in this case, and it depends, but in many cases, once the town meeting vote happens, it takes effect and lasts. There's some objection from the Attorney General. So I, I would imagine that we would.
Yeah, so this was pursuant to MGL fifty three, which is why I'm agreeing with you, Matt, that.
Yeah, I think we would be putting the amount and we would have a pro and con.
So I, I do believe the town clerk, Kari Tari, is on?
Yes, I am. Yes, thank you. So where the, this is not a by law amendment. This is a local option. The town has accepted the local option and there's nothing in the law that indicates there is another step to take before it is in effect.
Okay, because it would be hard to find someone to write the con statement, I think.
Exactly. Well, it's, it's really up to council if, if there isn't someone who has a con statement to write both sides or to write that side that, that is not represented.
Okay, I, I guess we need to check. But anyway, that, that's just, we'll follow up and find out. Any other questions or comments before we take a vote on this?
And our vote is not a question of endorsing.
It's just the wording.
Appropriations, so just the vote.
The wording of the ballot question.
Of what has to go on the ballot.
That's right. That's right. Okay. Can I get a motion?
Sorry, I was muted again. Sorry about that. Okay. Move to approve the language for the ballot question for the September sixth, twenty twenty two special election as presented in the select board meeting package.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, now, roll call vote? Sorry.
Roll call vote, okay. Mr. Dane?
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Ackerman, aye.
Okay, thanks very much. Now, we have a brief presentation on the status of our volunteer database and the plan for catching up on some missing past minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I can give you guys a brief update regarding the volunteer database. As you know, I've only been in this position since May. But what I do know is that the database has been the source of some headaches for the board, town manager staff, and the staff of the town clerk's office. To that end, in March of twenty two, the town contracted with LL Data Designs to design us a new database. We've begin, begun to implement the new database and it does, it, it was built using data from the previous database. And I think that's really been the crux of the issue.
Yeah.
To that end, Lori Austin in the town clerk's office has gone through and concentrated on scrubbing the data. Because of the pandemic, she's kind of taken the approach of going at it from a compliance standpoint. So ensuring that all boards and committees are up to date on their open meeting law trainings, ethics trainings, that they've come in and taken their oaths. And so as opposed to going, you know, from A to Z, she's sort of tried to go at it from the approach that we have to be in compliance. And so that's what she's really focused on. It's a daunting task. There are over sixty boards and committees in town and she is doing a great job. We meet every Thursday, ten o'clock to kind of go over the progress she's making and to try to set up some procedures to better handle requests from board and committee chairs, staff members, and the select board. We have begun to sort of codify that. Just to give you an idea of how the system works, there are two ways that a resident can volunteer for a board or committee. They can fill out the volunteer card, the physical card here at the, the townhouse, or they can apply online. When they apply online, we get an email sent to the TMO inbox. Now, as Lori and I have been meeting, we realized, well, Lori doesn't have access to that. So we've actually changed that process so that both Lori and I are notified because any database, for the most part, lies on some kind of manual input and ours is no different. So as opposed to that email just coming into our office and, you know, hopefully getting picked up that day, now both Lori and I are notified. So at least one of us, you know, can ensure that that gets into the database. Because this database was built on the old one, there's still work to be done, quite a bit. But we are committed to getting it right and, and again, working on some procedures to clean this thing up. I mean, we're lucky in terms of appointments because we can rely on APP ten that really lays things out for us very clearly. The actual procedures of, you know, putting everything into the database and then utilizing it to the best of its ability is a work in progress. I will say that in my limited interactions with LL Data Designs, they're very responsive. They've put in a, a number of different reports that, from what I can gather, we didn't have access to with the last database. And if we go and say, look, we need a new report put in or a new feature added, they're very responsive in updating the database to, to add that feature. You know, like I said, this is a work in progress. I, I would say, again, in my very limited experience, one of the things that, you know, I'm sure everyone knows is important is collaboration in this process. Again, Lori and I are doing our best to stay up to date on everything, but there are a couple of things that, you know, we'd request more help from, not necessarily the board, but from the board and committee chairs. Number one would be appointments of chairs and clerks annually. Lori, in being in the town clerk's office, uploads all the meeting minutes that are submitted. So she's very good about, you know, every April and May, trying to catch who the new clerk or chair is. But I think if the clerk and/or the chair, whoever, reaches out to us, we can ensure that the database is up to date, just makes things easier. Additionally, when we have a resignation, if we could get notification again from either the chair or the clerk of a board or committee, that would also be very helpful.
Yeah.
So.
We almost need a, like, responsibilities of the chair and clerk document or something. Yeah.
That would be great.
Cheat sheet, almost.
Yeah. And one other thing that I would add, you know, as we do appointments and nominations, it would also be helpful if a chair of a board or committee is nominated. it would also be helpful if a chair of a board or committee is nominating someone to, if their charge calls for a, a member to have a certain role. I think the Pollinator Advisory Board, for example, they have certain roles laid out in their charge.
Right.
If we could have that piece of information, it would be helpful to, to include. That way, before we make an appointment, we can ensure that any board or committee member is filling that role, or they're not filling a role that, you know.
Right.
There's only so many open seats to, to, to residents, so.
Well, and there's this other aspect of posting on the website what the rosters are and all of that.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, going forward, that's something that we could, we could certainly work on. When you look at the different board and committee pages, some boards and committees are very lucky, they have a staff liaison, and so, generally speaking, I can say with great confidence that anything covered under planning, land management, their pages are generally up to date. Elizabeth Hughes is, she's very good at, at staying on top of things and, and making sure that their pages are up to date, but there are boards and committees that don't have a staff liaison, and so, it may be helpful for them to have a point person that they can reach out to, to say, look, can you, can you make some page updates? Erin Stevens is, is very good about updating the town website, but, again, in, in my role, if a board or committee needs help, I'm happy to provide it.
Okay.
So, so, thank you for all the work that's being done on this, and it's, it's so complex, there are so many pieces to it, and I think we realize that. It's, it's hard not to be impatient, however, and, and you've been very responsive when we call in with concerns. So, your suggestion that, you know, each, the, the chair and the clerk, you know, call in with new information, you know, around the items that you suggested, and I think another line of defense there is the select board liaison, because if they happen to be present at those meetings where those decisions are being made, just, just so that we have multiple sources, you'd rather have it here twice than not at all, I guess is, is a point. When I looked, and I, I also know that, you know, as, as new staff in the office, you have to rely on the town report, the most recent town report, and looking at the lineup of the, the commissions and committees. And I, I just happened to notice, and unfortunately, you can't rely on that 100%, and I'll give you one clear example that jumped out at me, the, the CPC is not anywhere to be found in that list in the most recent town report. And so, that's just one example. And, and then there were a couple items that you wouldn't necessarily be looking for that or know that, until you wanted to see who were the past members and whatever. And then, and, and so, I, I guess it's just a caution that somehow we have to go back and find some earlier source data, if you will. Because even the placement of some of the regulatory boards and the board appointments may have been under the select board section versus the town managers' section, you know, with select board supports, et cetera. And, so there, unfortunately, I, I'm just, what you don't already know, I'm telling you what you already know, but you can't rely on that, as your, the most recent ones is the, your source data. And then, the other thing that came to mind as I'm listening to you, is that, I'm going to lose this thought here, you were talking about... Sorry, it, it'll come to me as we're, as we're talking, it just escaped me. Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll come back to that. Oh, I, oh, I know what it is. My colleague here, Henry Dane, has on numerous occasions saying, wouldn't it be nice if we had a, a full, complete database of all the committee charges? And in some cases, you really need to go back to those committee charges to fi, to answer the question you were bringing to our attention, which is, when they're appoint, appointee representative from another committee to that committee that you're, or commission that is in question. And the reason I say that, you, you really need to go back to the original committee charges, or the most recent amended committee charge, is because from time to time, I hear comments that, well, you know, the charge says this, and then when you pull up the charge, the charge did not say that. And it's, it's all in, I, I assume people have the best intentions, but, you know, we just get, we have so much information thrown at us all the time that, you know, it's, so, it's, it's another task to add to this very complex process that you're involved in trying to sort out, but I think it's key.
So, to, to both of those points. First, regarding the annual town report, again, I, I wasn't, you know, I've obviously never been involved with the publishing, and I didn't have access to the old database. What I can say is that we do have reports that we can pull now from our database that show us every active board and committee. And so, a, as it comes time to publish next year's annual town report, I would fully expect that we pull that report and ensure that every single one of those boards and committees is in there, that's what we should do. It's, like you said, there is, this has kind of been an onion process, right? Every time we jump into something else, we find something else. I think the pandemic certainly aggravated some of those issues, you know, but as Lori, and, and truly, a, a lot, a lot of the credit should go to Lori Austin, she's doing an incredible job in the town clerk's office.
Well, I appreciate both, everyone's work on this.
Sure.
So, so, you know, the, the SOP, the standard operating procedure that we have used in the past, to always at the top of a char, a charge, I'll use a charge as an example, committee charge as an example, whenever we amend it, or first of all, when we approve it, at the very top of the document in the right-hand corner, the, the standard operating procedure was always to indicate when it was originally approved, with the date, and then, if we as a committee happen to, you know, revise that charge, then the amended date, when it was approved, would fall, would fall right under that original date, so you could see the sequence of events. And the reason this detail is so important is because that's also going to inform the overall system that you're trying to make work.
Right, right.
And so, so almost every document that ends up being something that we approve, those approval dates or amendment dates really become something that we refer to and rely on.
Yeah, and, and I do know, I, I don't want to speak for Lori, and I do think she's actually, she's on the call right now, but I, I know she has looked at a number of the board and committee charges as she's gone through this process, and, and she may, in fact, she's got her hand up, so she, it does seem she'd like to speak to it, so.
All right, Ms. Austin, Austin?
Hi, thank you, Lori Austin from the town clerk's office. I'm just touching on a couple of points that Mike has brought up. We do have a chart in, that shows the work divisions, Chris Carmody has that, I can email that to you. And it just very clearly shows which offices take which aspects of, you know, sort of a division of labor. In terms of updating the websites, I just found this week that I do have permissions to make those edits on the website, so as I have the committees sorted and confirm all of the members, I can make those updates. And my hope is to have, you know, sort of a similar setup on each committee page, so that people can know where to find that information. And in terms of the sources of data, it's, it is painstaking work. We have a book of all of the committee charges, and part of the work that we've been doing is making sure that those are updated and making sure that information is reflected in the database. We do have all of the town meeting books, so, so sometimes it is a matter of going back, you know, four or eight years, looking through each one. So, the, you know, the history of appointments is there, sometimes when it's, it's missing in the database, it takes a little bit of work, but we do have the resources to do it, it's just painstaking. But again, what Mike is saying about the town manager's office and the town clerk's office working more closely together, I think will help. I am new as well, I started just a few weeks before Mike, so it's a little bit hammering out how the workflow goes, and it's getting there, and it will get better every day that we work on it.
Can I make a comment? I'm, I'm, actually, I'm glad you're starting with the compliance, you're coming at it from compliance, because the, some of the committees that I liaise with need to hear that, need to get up to speed on compliance, but one of the things that I'm hearing from a lot of citizens within Concord that I talk to is, they filled out a volunteer card and they never hear anything. And so, I'm wondering, is there any way that we get back to them, to tell them that, yes, we have your card, it's on file, we're, we're putting it in front of the right people? Is there any feedback?
And thank you for, thank you for stepping forward.
So is there any me, feedback mechanism, or to, just, people are feeling like it just goes into a black hole?
So, there's not?
Micra?
That's right, I'm sorry. So, I, I can say that if somebody submits a volunteer card online right now, and it, it may be a possibility, we don't have an auto-generated message or anything like that saying, you know, thank you for offering to volunteer for the Town of Concord, if it's something you guys would like, I'd be happy to look into it. Generally, what I have been doing is when we have a new volunteer card come in, I alert the chair of a board or committee, so that they know to reach out to that potential volunteer. That's been, again, not a, a policy.
Did you add the liaison to that?
Yeah, I, I certainly can, and, and as I said it, I, I saw, I saw some eyes go wide, I can certainly do that.
The chair isn't, doesn't appoint them, it's actually either the town manager or the select board that appoints the person to the committee, right? So, we, we really should be in the loop.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with you there, and, again, I think part of it is just being new.
That's right.
But I, I, I think, I initially thought to send to the chair, because, you know, there being the chair or clerk of a committee, they understand the, the roles that somebody may be able to fill in terms of the charge roles, and that, but I, I completely agree.
Yeah, also, I just want to note, we're over 10 minutes over this topic. I, I wanted to ask if you just had a brief comment about the minutes.
I certainly do, I can do that much more quickly. So, I, I reached out to the chair, about a week ago, maybe a week and a half ago, regarding your back meeting minutes. By my.
To the clerk?
I'm sorry, to the clerk. By my count, we're back approximately 18 sets. That's a mix of regular and executive session, only two executive sessions, going back into, as far back as October 4th, 2021. I put this list together to seek advice from the board as how you'd like to approach the completion of the meeting minutes. In terms of open meeting law, we are outside of the 30 days or three meetings for most of these meetings. So I, I, the only guidance I'd seek is, how would you like me to approach them? Start with the oldest and work forward, or start with the most recent and work back?
I think the most recent, yeah.
Most recent.
Most recent, work back, yeah, and then, the other thing is, the minutes, I think, should just capture our decisions at a minimum, right? They don't, they don't have to elaborate particularly. It would be nice if they had a couple of other aspects that are covered, but for these minutes in particular, we're really talking about compliance. For the open sessions that we had, they were all videotaped, so for the public, you know, that, that needs to see the details of a discussion, they're there, I think what's key here is to have the public record of decisions that we've made, so that in times, you know, immemorial, if they need to figure that out, they can, you know, independent of the videos.
Great, and the only other thing outside of the, how we want to do them, it would be nice, my, I estimate that I can get two sets of meetings done biweekly, does that timeline work for the board?
You know, I, we're really just seeking a way to create a record, so, you know, it would be great to go faster, because I think just the embarrassment of it.
Sure.
But I also understand, you know, especially, the longer time ago they were, the harder it is, because it's not something that you can just bring to mind, it's probably before your time.
It was, yeah.
You know, all of those things, you have no context, so, that, that's tricky.
Okay.
Do, you do the minutes by looking at the video, or do you do them from your notes?
Well, generally, I do both, but with all of these meetings, I, I wasn't in attendance.
I'm tempted to assign two sets of minutes to each board member, you know, that just might be the fastest way to get them, you know, get punched down.
My point is that, if you work from your, if you work for your notes, actually, it's much easier and quicker.
Easier than watching the video.
Yeah, because, you know, it's hard staying, hard staying awake, watching those videos.
If our board members, our current board members might be in a better position to do that, why don't we, why don't we take, we might take 10 of those minutes off your hands.
Sounds good.
So.
With the, with our 250th committee, we have our minutes the following day.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this has come up at other committees, and, yeah, I, I think we would be willing to do, do this.
I think we need to pitch in and help.
So just assign them to us.
In terms of a process, where this came out, but a couple other committees, they were going to at least have one set of minutes that more or less reflected the template and the sort of the.
The style.
The style and, and the, the degree of, you know, specificity, yeah, because then I think that will be more helpful.
Anybody want to be our paragon?
And, and the other thing I would say about this, and you were probably implying this with what you said earlier, that, yes, you want to make sure the official votes are there, but as we've seen on several of our minutes, we also need to have the regulatory process reflected, OML process and the regulatory process reflected accurately, because it, that's key too.
Yeah, you mean, who was present and?
And open, public, closed, you know, took a roll call vote when we need that, all those.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
So, Matt, I, I had a, a number of comments, um, I had my hand up for a while, but, sorry, I can't be there in person, but, first of all, I really want to commend Mike for, since Mike's been here, all of our minutes have come in at the following meeting. They might be perfect, and we might not, and we might amend them, but he's been doing them right on time, so, I like that idea of Mike going backwards, and then meanwhile, the board can maybe catch up going forwards, and then we'll meet in the middle somewhere. I think that might work. And I also agree, Mike, with what Henry's saying. Don't bother with the video unless you don't understand what's going on, and even then, call me on the clerk, call the chair, and say, what the heck were you talking about? What did Mary Hartman mean, or whatever? Don't waste a lot of time, just take your notes, write it up, and, and, because we have a video, so it doesn't have to be a transcript, I, I think that's the fastest way to do it. Also, you said that you have a list of 18 sets of minutes, can you send that to me as a clerk, and we could start talking about what to do with that?
Absolutely.
If I may, Matt, can I go back to the, of the topic about the volunteers for a couple minutes, because I haven't?
Yeah, although we are, again, we're approaching 20 minutes over.
Okay, I'll be really quick. So, I'm, I'm really excited, Lori and Mike, that you're working on it, and Lori, that you're going to be updating the webpages, that's really, really needed. Um, Lori, you mentioned a report that you have, can you send that? That was the first thing you said, I don't remember what that report was, but if you could send that out to us, I'd appreciate getting that as clerk. And, um, I'm confused about the auto-generation. On the old system, we had a very bad, with Civic Plus, we had a very bad auto-generation. It went in people's spam file, it didn't say Town of Concord. Jeremy and I got it approved somewhat, and it did say Town of Concord. I don't understand why we can't do another auto-generated thing that just says, thanks so much for volunteering with the Town of Concord, you know, your application is going to the chair of the committee and the liaison, and we'll get back to you. If, if that's something you could look into, that'd be great. And then, finally, I'm really hoping that when there's vacancies, like right now, for example, there are vacancies on the DEI, on the Transportation Committee, on a number of committees that are on our agenda tonight. If those chairs and those liaisons for those vacancies could take a look at the list of who all the volunteers are for that, so, for example, I'm a liaison for Transportation, and Nick Pappas is the chair, the Transportation Committee. We have a list of who the volunteers were, who checked off transportation. We get a lot done and see you and Lori a lot of time. Is there some way that we get that report?
Good idea.
I think that's all, every liaison and every chair should get that report.
Yep, it's a good idea.
When, when that data is available, I, that's what I hear is part of the problem. Okay. All right, I think we should move on. Thanks for that update. And now we're here to talk about the town manager's plan for ARPA funding for this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. There is a memo in the packet and I'd like to just take a moment to go through that for anybody who is new to to this topic this evening. So the town received about $5.65 million in ARPA funding. That's the American Rescue Plan Act about a year ago. And we have received 50% of that to date and we expect to receive the balance of that even as soon as next month. We've had two public here or two, two meetings where this topic was addressed. The first one was back in September of last year and at that time, we talked really about the program and the priorities of the program as set forth in the state, in the federal law. And they they deal with public health, economic impacts of the public health emergency, lost revenue, premium or hazard pay for essential work and water, sewer and broadband infrastructure projects. So at that meeting in September, it was a new concept and we talked about the plan. We didn't really receive a whole lot of feedback at that time. So you scheduled a second hearing or second forum in January. And you received a lot of feedback at that meeting. And I have included a synopsis of of all of the types of projects that were mentioned at that meeting, affordable housing, economic development, human services, infrastructure, lost revenue, again, the premium hazard pay, transportation initiatives, utility expansion. Really, a lot of feedback and people had a lot of ideas. So since that time, and I think we have reported this to you before, in April, just this past April, the federal government said that for any community that is less than 50,000 in population and received less than $10 million in ARPA funding, they were really encouraging us to consider this grant funding as lost revenue under the lost revenue category. So there was, when the original ruling came out, there was a specific calculation that you had to go through to determine what amount could be considered lost revenue. We did go through that calculation and felt pretty strongly that that the full 5.6 million that we received, we could take it in that way if we chose to. But then the federal government, the Department of Treasury stepped in and said, if it's under 10 million and you're under 50,000, you can consider it lost revenue. The board, on a couple of occasions, has talked a little bit more about ARPA and how you might prioritize projects. And I've I've captured my recollection of those discussions. I've understood that the board is interested in, to the greatest extent possible, that we consider allocation of this money through the budget and capital planning process. But obviously, we are, we are past the budget and capital planning process for for 22 and 23. And so that you would consider some different requests just at this level in a public setting, but outside of of the budget process.
That's right.
So that is, and then we talked about maybe looking at allocating these funds over a five-year fiscal year period, beginning in the current fiscal year, fiscal year 22, because that's when the first allocation was made. It it gets potentially tricky because under the law, the the commitment needs to be made by December 31, 2024, which is in fiscal 25, and the in the full spending, December 31, 2026, which is in fiscal 27. I think we're, we're calling this lost revenue. And and I think those timetables are less, less important. And I think we can make a case to use it over that full period. And so the assumption was up, up to one-fifth of the total each year would would be potentially eligible.
Right.
One other item that I wanted to mention that is not in the memo because we have talked about the free cash aspect. If this is lost revenue, does it actually have to be reseeded into the general fund and become, fall to the, to the bottom line? Because it wasn't appropriated, become free cash and we're making free cash appropriations? We did finally hear from the Department of Revenue last week that even if you take it in as free cash, they will still allow it to be accounted for in a separate grant fund. So that's helpful because I, we're not then talking about having like two types of free cash, which I thought we might originally have. So it's much, it's much easier. I like the idea of not, not appropriating from free cash, so. So then in the balance of the memo, I've talked about in fiscal 22, we have allocated some certain amounts. We've allocated $400,000 for lost parking meter revenue. That was at the 2021 annual town meeting. And then just recently, $100,000 for the trolley service. There's one other item that I would like you to consider, and that is for the premium hazard pay. And I'm suggesting $300,000 of ARPA funds and potentially to combine that with $150,000 in, in fiscal 22 general fund. So I could take that up now or run through, take that, okay, so.
Yeah, let's take up the FY22 items first.
Sure, yeah.
And the.
Okay, I would just say that I think you had presented this possibility of the hazard pay in this amount to us before. And I think that the board was generally favorable of the concept. I also do think that it's appropriate as an FY22 expenditure, just given that, you know, the most intensive period of COVID is hopefully trying to close now. And so those professionals that were on the front lines and had to deal with those situation, that situation really, I think, should be compensated as close to the event as is as feasible.
So if if I could just take a few moments just to go through the concept because we have, over the last several months, referred to it as premium pay because that's, that's how it's referred to in the law. And I think there's a somewhat of a misconception about what that might be. So while while it is considered or referred to as premium pay, it it's really hazard pay for all intents and purposes. And it is a payment for work, essential work that was undertaken by municipal employees for the assumption of additional risk. And it doesn't talk about essential workers, it talks about essential work. And essential work is defined in the law as work involving regular in-person interactions or regular physical handling of items that were also handled by others. And that is the definition of essential work. We have said that, that under this policy, we would be looking to provide a one-time lump sum payment for this essential work, for work that was, that was undertaken during the pandemic. And that we have the dates of March 15, 2020 to June 30, 2021. We've already talked about the funding source. In the concept outline, it talks about who is eligible. And we're talking about employees who are active, active employees as of June 30, 2022. They've worked at least 120 hours between, during the period. That may seem like not, not a whole lot of hours, but when you get into this, you can see that we're talking about prorating. And the reason we have that, sort of that low threshold is we have a lot of limited status employees who were involved in childcare and involved in recreation daycare programs. And so we, we are looking to capture them at a level that is appropriate or commensurate with the amount of work that they did. Because childcare is something that is absolutely covered here. We're also talking about people who did not receive unemployment benefits during this period. And generally, those who are classified as non-exempt under the FLSA. So hourly employees. There is an opportunity to compensate exempt employees, but there are specific earnings or earnings thresholds for, for exempt employees when you're, when you're considering them. We are making provisions for part-time employees and limited status again. There are certain exclusions. We're not looking to provide any compensation for former employees. For any employees who who have received, referred to as additional duties. So there are some, not, not many, but there are some instances where employees, their positions changed so dramatically as a result of dealing with the pandemic, that they received some additional duties compensation for a period of time. So anybody who has, has received that type of pay would be excluded. Anybody who, who did their job remotely for 75% or more would also be excluded because that does not meet the the definition.
The threshold.
So we have identified five different categories. We spent an awful lot of time on this and we are still working to determine who, everybody who would be eligible and where they would fall. And, and at the end, we may find that, you know, there's nobody in category four or there's nobody in three or something like that. But it's, we, we have spent quite a bit of time trying to come up with what we think makes sense, given the budget that we think is acceptable. The $300,000, that's about 5.5% of the grant, the total grant. Was trying to keep it around there. There are.
Do you have a sense of how much of the 450,000 that you've earmarked would be consumed? I mean, it sounds like you're still fine tuning some of the categorization of employees, but.
So what I, what I can tell you, category one is the easiest and it's around $200,000 in category one. I I think we probably, I think the 450 in total is probably a little bit more than than what we would need, but we, we have not made a full calculation.
Okay, but that gives me a good sense.
Yeah. I would much rather see the money go here than go to replace lost parking meter revenue.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and.
I have a question. Whoops. Oh, I have a question.
I think Henry was still speaking, if.
And I don't know if that lost parking meter thing is, is, is written in stone at this point, but.
It's already been committed.
It has been committed.
It was 300,000, though, that was committed at town meeting.
I thought it was 400,000.
No, the article's three.
So in 2021?
Yep.
Well, if, if it, I'll go back and and check that. I think the fiscal 23 budget was 300,000.
The article said 300.
But this is, this is from the 2021 annual town meeting for fiscal 22. But I'm, I'm happy to go back and, and double check that.
It might just, my thought was that if we didn't, I'm, I don't know whether what we're, what we're offering, offering is enough. But if we needed more money, there might be, it might be taken from another category, which was less, less important.
Ms. President.
So it was helpful to hear that the category one was about 200,000. I I guess the question I have is, does category one include every single person in that category? Or will there be some people who do not meet, meet that qualification?
So under, under the proposal, we have put forward all uniformed first responders. So all uniformed police and fire would be in that category. Is.
Unless they got that other kind of pay that you were discussing.
Right, and that, and that's not the, that's not the case with anybody in this group.
Okay, I recall that Terry had a question.
Right, so my question is, what is the reaction so far from the employees? And specifically, are there any employees who are complaining that they want a different program or they feel that it doesn't treat their category fairly? Like, is there any problem with this so far?
So what I can tell you is I have not received a whole lot of direct feedback. But it would not surprise me if, we, we will consider each employee's eligibility on an individual basis. It would not surprise me if there is some disagreement with the decision that is made. But the law is very specific that how, how these funds can be used in this particular instance. So it is, right, and.
Right, so I just, um, you know, you're not going to please 100% of people, but I from your remarks that there is not like a whole group or a whole union or a whole department that feels that it's unfair. You haven't heard anything like that.
I have not, I have not heard any, I have not heard much direct feedback. That, that doesn't mean that people aren't talking about it within the organization. And I'm sure, I'm sure as we move forward to implementing this, we'll hear more. But, but again, we will consider each employee's eligibility for this program.
Okay. Any other questions before we move?
I have a comment. I understand that the decision to how to spend this money is really up to the town manager and she's asking for our input and that's fine. But going forward, for subsequent years after FY22, wouldn't it be prudent to also get the opinion of the finance committee?
No, in the, in the future, this, we will just fold the money into the capital and.
I'm even talking about FY23. The money we've got listed here for FY23.
Oh, for FY23.
Right.
Well, so for FY23, these are ideas. To give you a sense of, of what I'm thinking about, but there's no specific proposal being made for anything for FY23. And I've, I've noted different groups that I would talk to. And I certainly can put the finance committee and the finance committee to the list.
But isn't FY23 already voted at town meeting for the regular budget, right?
No, no, no. So FY22 is just about to end.
Right.
Okay.
She's right about the 500,000, though, for the affordable housing has already been voted.
That's been voted, okay. And, and I think that Carrie's noted that as being committed, right?
Yes, but there's another 400,000.
Among the FY23 items. But the others, they would not be part of our budgetary process because they can't be.
Right.
But you're, as you had suggested, perhaps we'll pass this by the, the finance committee. It would be a nice process. Okay, so, but I thought we were on FY22 still.
We are, sorry.
So I guess at this point, I don't know, we have a number of members is staying here from the public. If there was any comments you'd like to make at this point, that'd be fine. If so, you could approach the table, identify yourself, make your comment. Otherwise, I guess we would move to the FY23 items if there isn't any other feedback or if you wanted to sort of take our, get our, get our sense of this.
Yeah, it would be helpful to, to get your sense. Oh, Sergeant Rennie, come on.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you to the town manager and the select board for hearing me out today. I know everyone in this room.
And you could identify yourself, please?
Of course. I know everyone in this room, but for everyone at home that doesn't know me, I'm Luke Rennie. I'm a supervisor for the Concord Police Department. I'm the vice president for our union. President Detective Michael Burdenka is working a midnight shift and a day shift tomorrow. So he would love to be here, but I'm going to speak for us. Here with me today is my E-board Officer Greg Bayou, Officer John O'Connor and Officer Joshua Burdenka. We want to thank you for considering these ARPA funds for the first responders, for the police officers and for the fire department. I'll be quick. We discussed this previously on what it was like to work through the COVID-19 pandemic so far, especially when it hit. Obviously, we could not do our jobs from home for the nature of our positions. when it hit. Obviously, we could not do our jobs from home for the nature of our positions. We enjoy being police officers very much. We love serving this community, and we will continue to do that with distinction. But because we worked during this pandemic, a lot of us got COVID-19, not one, but multiple times, and we brought that home to our families. It was added stress, but we continued, like I said, to do our jobs with distinction. This also, we had to work a lot more because obviously, police officers were sick, various firefighters were sick. We had to cover those shifts. So it was a difficult time for us, and we absolutely worked through it, and we worked hard, and it worked out. But we appreciate your consideration for these ARPA funds very much, and we want to thank you for giving us the time to talk to you for a moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, and I wish it could be more.
Good evening. Brett Mills, Local 1942 for the Concord Professional Firefighters. I'm the president. I too am backed by my E-Board, my Vice President Jimmy Foley, Eric Kempf, Brendan Lyons, and on the end, Jimmy Mizola. One of our members also is working shift right now, so he's not president as well. It's tough to echo the sentiment, but we all also showed up every day, 24-hour shifts. We took on extra responsibilities throughout the time from testing and vaccination throughout the duration of the pandemic. Our goal as members was to show up. We all chose to be firefighters, and it's a profession that we were drawn to, and it really became part of our lives. We too, as we became exposed, took on different responsibilities and ways to manage our exposures at home, member sleeping basements, garages, setting up alternative living arrangements. Just something that I guess we never thought we'd experience when we went down this road. But at this time, you know, we just thank you for the consideration. And if it happened again tomorrow, which we hope it doesn't, we would still rise to the challenge and continue to perform our duties. But at this point, to have the opportunity to obtain a little bit of a bonus for the hazard pay for the members and what they've done and brought home to their families, and some of the lasting effects that the members have had that have been exposed to COVID, that still haven't regained their sense of taste and smell, et cetera. So again, I appreciate the time from the manager, the select board. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think we should thank these these members of our town community for actually taking the time and trouble to actually show up
Yes.
to talk about something that's important to them, because there's so many people who just are happy to sit at home and in front of their TV or their Zoom and not understanding how much difference it really makes for people to take the time and trouble to show up.
All right. Then I think you've got a sense of the board's support for this item, and we can move to the FY '23 items.
Thank you.
So Carrie, may I just start with a question? You know, I know the board previously spoke about, you know, roughly that came out to about taking the full amount that had been designated from ARPA, and roughly a fifth of that being spent for each of the years. But maybe I'm confusing this with the original ruling, but didn't the funds have to be committed by, prior to the fifth year?
Yeah. So I think, again, because we are taking this, we're taking it under the lost revenue, I think we have some additional flexibility.
Okay.
One of the things I wanted to get a sense of is whether or not you wanted to shorten it up and just say, we're going to assume that we'll be committing this over the next two budget cycles, so '24 and '25, and then we could, if we get some sort of late ruling that said, oh, no, it needs to be fully spent, we're not in a pickle, so to speak.
Yeah. So, yeah, I am concerned about that of prior.
Yeah.
And so that would just put, that would at least put one third of it into the normal budgetary process?
Yes. Actually, no, more.
More.
More. So it would be well, we have about four, so about 4 million of it, or 3.9 million would go through the regular budget process, assuming there's agreement on how this would spend. So
Whatever is left, you mean, after this goes?
So the question is, is that 3.9 going to be spent over two or three years?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think we can wait on that.
Yeah, we can. I stand corrected, Carrie. You're right. It was 400,000 for the parking meter.
I think we're just all trying to forget that.
Okay. Sorry. But you were right. You're right.
All right.
So let's forget it.
So for fiscal '23, again, it was already mentioned that 500,000 has been committed through the annual town meeting for affordable housing. What I tried to do then is, I'm showing an additional $400,000. Obviously, we want the bulk of the money to go through the public process, but there, we got a lot of ideas about how the money could be allocated from the public hearings. And we also know that there is an awful lot of grant funding available at the federal and state level, and that we have, over the last several years, had a very difficult time, maybe more than a few years, in applying for grants. We have been, then, at times have been successful, receive a grant, and then we're not able, we have to turn it back because we're not able to do the work. And so I thought it might make sense to allocate some funding. I've proposed up to $200,000 for transportation initiatives. This is something that probably at almost every select board meeting, you're talking about transportation. We, in the
It's in our goals.
It's in, right, it's in the goals.
Yeah.
In the fiscal '23 budget, we had only planned for a part-time transportation planner, even though we have somebody on staff who is interested in that position and essentially committing close to full time already. So I know, even though it's only budgeted at halftime, the reality is that person is going to work full time. We may be able to figure out a way to accommodate that with the existing budget appropriation. But there's been talk or need for transportation studies, or a study, some improvements. There might be a need for some grant matching funds. I'm not suggesting that we spend this money now or commit this money. I think it would make sense, if there's an interest in this, that this go to the Transportation Advisory Committee, and they have some discussion about how, if they had access to up to $200,000, how would that best be used? So I think that is important. Similarly, with economic development, that is something, again, part of your goals. It's come up a number of times at this meeting. You've heard from the Concord Business Partnership about their interest in an economic development officer. And so I'm suggesting up to $125,000. Again, a lot of grant money available, and I think it would make sense to put some resources here. Before anything was brought back to you, a formal proposal, I'd be looking to receive some input from the EVC, from the Business Partnership, from the Chamber of Commerce, and there may be other places you would like us to look in terms of seeking feedback there. The next item is affordable housing. This would be up to $30,000. This one is probably the closest to being fully formed. But as you know, in the spring of 2023, based upon the 2020 census, we are likely to fall short of our 10% of affordable housing, leaving us open to potential 40B development. There is some work that could be done, that the town could work on developing an inventory of all potential units to be added to the subsidized housing inventory, and/or develop a strategic plan to identify up to 20 units. So I think the issue is, based on the 2020 census, we are likely to be somewhere between eight and 20 units short of the 10%. And so this scope of work was identified as something that would fall outside of the current contract that we have with the Regional Housing Services Office. It's not to say that we couldn't contract for additional work, but it wouldn't be included in our current scope of work.
I'm very confused, though. The Housing Production Plan
Exactly.
has these deliverables.
Yes.
So I don't get why we're not already pursuing this as part of the Housing Production Plan effort that's underway.
So this was something that came in kind of late last week, and I included it, but we're not, I'm not suggesting that we're moving forward yet. I'm trying to give you a sense of what I think are the highest priorities for fiscal '23. So I'm happy to go back and look at this more to make sure. We certainly don't want to duplicate
Yeah.
any work. So if you feel like this is already
Well, if it's not, I'm just confused about the scope of the Housing Production Plan.
You know, I think this certainly has to be worked through the Housing Production Plan, and it's already being discussed. It was at the Housing Forum. This is where this information was presented. And, but it is, will not be their job to scope out what that development plan might look like.
What the development plan might look like? It is a production plan.
What is a development plan, I guess? I don't understand what a development plan is.
I mean, it's a housing, the Housing Production Plan is about how to develop affordable housing.
Right.
I mean, and however means you can, you know?
Yeah. So a housing production plan might say, you know, we ought to consider X number of units, you know, at this side or that side, or we might consider going after a certain type of housing, you know, whether it be rental, or whether it be homeownership, or the Housing Production Plan might say, we might want to target buying down so many
Yeah, but it does also identify specific sites and, you know, that are available.
But it means essentially the town funding and building housing.
But what it doesn't do is, for example, when Junction Village was originally looked at, you needed to hire services in order to scope out what, how that land could be used, or how you might accomplish X number of units. So
We don't have a piece of land available to us now to do that. I don't understand the work that's being done here.
Yeah. I think this just needs more work.
So it's an idea.
Yeah.
And it might not be the right idea.
Okay. Well, and again, we may not have folks on the line right now that could speak to it, so we can take it up again.
Keith Bergman has his hand up.
Okay. Mr. Bergman. You may need to unmute yourself.
Okay, very good. Thanks very much. Keith Bergman, 56 White Avenue, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. First, I want to thank Carrie for including an item on affordable housing on tonight's discussion. And if nothing else, I hope you will view it as a placeholder, because the issue that the Affordable Housing Trust and the other housing entities are looking at is, based on the rather new information, that Junction Village building permits may not be issued by next spring, when the denominator changes on our 40B percentage calculation. That is, when the new 2020 census figure is implemented by the state's Department of Housing and Community Development, it's their determination. The information that was shared with the trust on June 9, and with the Housing Production Plan Steering Committee on June 15, was that there's the real possibility that Junction Village units will not get, building permit will not get issued by then, in which case we asked, well, by how many units would we be below 10%? What do we think? And the answer from Liz Russ was an estimate of somewhere between eight and 20 units. So that set off alarm bells with us, because the one thing that I don't think any of us wants to be in is finding ourselves next spring having fallen below 10% and not having looked at all of the things that we could have done to prevent that. So that's sort of the motivating factor here. And in terms of the discussion tonight, it may not be the services that need to come from ARPA funds to do the level of housing, affordable housing development detail, site-specific, what does it take, which ones have the best, which of identified options, which Liz Russ has given us a short list, which ones could actually get counted by next spring. That's the goal. If the Housing Production Plan doesn't get issued until this winter, that's too, that is too late to be able to have countable units by the spring. So we're looking at the level of, and we're just starting our discussion. We had one discussion with all the housing entities that the trust held last Wednesday. We're meeting again this Wednesday. We notified and invited reps from the Finance Committee. I reached out to the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee as well, and briefed them last week at their meeting, that we really want to raise the consciousness about if it looks like the town might fall below 10%, we have to have a process by which we identify now, very soon, what can we do to avoid that? At a minimum, you know, ARPA funding may not be the way to do the level of professional assistance that we think we need beyond what the budgeted funds are. We have to, you know, the trust fund itself is another potential source of funding. Indeed, the trust with a balance as of July 1 of $1,080,000, you know, we hope that that would be, that that may be a sufficient amount to be able to fund whatever project we need to get the number of units over the finish line. ARPA funds may also be needed, especially if they can be accessed without a town meeting vote. The only other, and what we want to do is to have a process, and we're continuing discussions about it, so that the community sees what are the options that we can undertake to avoid falling below 10%. Frankly, one of those
So Keith, I think the question is, what is the difference between this and the Housing Production Plan that we're already doing?
The Housing Production
The Housing Production Plan provides, a certified Housing Production Plan, under certain circumstances, can provide a safe harbor while we're sorting out this deficit.
It can, but the safe harbor, but that's actually, the safe harbor standard would be higher than eight to 20 units. The eight to 20 units is what it's estimated we would need to get from where we're ending up with the new denominator to what we would need to reach 10%. Not just reach safe harbor, which is what, which is producing a number of units equal to five, half a percent of the total housing stock, which is a lot higher than 20 units. So what, and the one point I wanted to make is, in the analysis, it needs to include, well, why aren't the Junction Village units, those 83 units that would get counted? Why aren't those going to be ready? Why isn't the building permit? And Liz has identified on her list the need for a bridge loan for Junction Village as a means to be able to get a building permit. The bridge loan would be between the time of the issuance of the building permit and the issuance of an occupancy permit. We'd get it repaid. That's just a concept. I'm just here to put it on your radar screen to say that none of us wants to be in a position where we've fallen below 10% next spring, and we didn't do all that we could to identify, how do we avoid that? So that's my point tonight.
Oh, this is a discussion for another day.
It is a discussion.
We're talking now just about some hypothetical uses for ARPA fund.
And we did raise the questions, yeah. And so there are two more items that we need to talk about on the list.
Have plenty to say, but I'm restraining myself.
Yeah. I think that sounds good at this late hour.
The additional two items, up to $25,000 for cell service, if this is needed. We had a study that was done more than five years ago. We're not far enough into this yet, but if we needed to move in earnest on a cell tower, on a town, piece of town-owned land, there may be a need to do some update of that. Right now, there is a potential for some additional equipment to be installed in a, at a private location that may greatly improve the service in the town center. So we're waiting to see if that will happen because that may buy us some additional time. It's not a complete fix and it's not the whole fix, but it would improve service and give us more time to make the best decision about where we might need to go next. And then the final is up to $20,000 for cultural arts. This is not particularly well-defined, but something that was brought up in, at the forum, that we don't spend the same as our neighboring communities in this area, that there are a lot of great benefits from these public art projects. There was a lot about brain health and different access to different services. We had talked about that as something in the fiscal 23 budget. We didn't really include anything there. We are seeing an increase or return to service levels. There's a lot going on at the Council on Aging, so we are hopeful that that will help. But this would be a small amount of money to do something else. So in total, that's another $400,000. That would bring fiscal 23 with the already in place commitment to $900,000. So it is less than what we would be looking at in future years when we have the time to fully bet through the public process.
So I have a quick question on the timing. I'm still confused because 23 starts in a few days and we already passed the budget at town meeting. And I just really understand how these are FY23 items.
These are over and above our budget. They, this is a separate pile of money that we're spending here.
Right. So for FY24 and beyond.
We've said we'll add it to the town pile of money for those years.
Okay, okay, I understand now. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment? My preference would be to use as much of this money as we can and roll it into the regular budgeting process, both the capital planning and the budgeting process. And, but the only two that I see here that would be advantageous to do sooner than that would be the transportation and the economic development because they take advantage of grants. As far as spending money for affordable housing, I guess I'd have to see something more concrete in front of me before I would be in favor of spending money on affordable housing. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think that we, yeah, concur on the affordable housing item. It needs to be clarified.
And what about cell service, since we keep talking about that?
I think if it's necessary to update the plan in order to solve the problem, it's certainly worth doing if it comes to that.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And then for the arts, I've always, in cultural programming, I've always been amazed that, you know, we have this Community Preservation Committee and funding that we do for historic preservation and all these other categories, but, you know, cultural and the arts is not among those categories. And so it's really up to the town to provide funding for those activities, and we typically have done very, very little. So I think it would be a great addition.
Shouldn't it go? So I hear, you know, I hear the concern about the affordable housing, but, you know, as Keith Bergman presented and asked, you know, is there any way that we can keep that as a placeholder? Because for any of these items, whether it be transportation, economics, cultural, whatever, my understanding is that developed proposals would come back to us. Did I understand you correctly?
Yes, just like we did with the trolley and we did with the hazard pay, we would, at the appropriate time, bring back a more fully formed proposal.
You know, I think the Economic Vitality Committee, the Concord Business Partnership, and the Chamber of Commerce have already given a lot of input, both written and verbal. So I think you've got enough there to go by as far as coming forward with a more concrete proposal for that. That's my, that's because I liaise with many of those. So I think that's almost ready to go.
Okay, are we all set on this topic?
Let's be, let's be.
Another comment, and that is, I certainly agree with the list that Carrie has laid out here. I just want to point out that some of this list, however, potentially includes a staff commitment going forward in terms of future budgets. I just want recognition.
Well, that's why I think the cautious approach for the economic vitality would be to start with a consulting position and then perhaps look at making it permanent. That is an example.
Possibility. That's not what's been asked for, though.
Well, in the case of the Transportation Coordinator, that would be a permanent position. So that would increase future budget years.
But the Economic Vitality Director as well has been asked to be a permanent.
Sure, sure. But I think Linda's point's well taken. Okay, let's move to Town Manager Goals. And just let me say that the ink is not yet dry on our agreement, which says that we should finalize goals by July 15th, but I'm concerned that it may be difficult to finalize those goals by that time. And I would beg that we could perhaps buy a little bit more time to do that.
We could extend that date by.
Well, by mutual agreement, but that's what I would ask to do. Otherwise, I think we're going to be looking at an extra meeting or something.
Or the goals will be impossible.
No, well, so, because maybe just a few general comments before we get into the details. You know, we had talked about this notion of SMART goals, at least that's what I had brought up. And when I look through these, especially the departmental level goals, and I realize that the Town Manager Goals are the key ones, right, for us to come to a decision about. But I really appreciate getting visibility to the department goals. But I would say that among the ones that I saw, the closest to a model were the ones for the Finance Department. When I look at that set of goals, at the end of the year, I could sit there and say, yep, 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 nope, yep. And it's very clear.
Well, that tells you where our Town Manager comes from.
No, well, I don't know if it was done by the Town. There are other people doing finance now, potentially.
Not at the time that the budget was developed.
Okay, well, let me just say that, you know, to the extent possible, that I would prefer over some that really are just establishing a set of responsibilities and on an ongoing basis. I won't highlight any of them. But then, from the Town Manager Goals perspective, it is fascinating to look at this and think about, okay, what is the distinct role of the Town Manager as opposed to the Town Manager's Office, the building? I mean, you, in some sense, are responsible for everything, but on the other hand, really personally responsible. It's really about the health and development of the organization, about establishing a culture for the town government, and, you know, about establishing as well just this effectiveness of the governance process itself. And so I think that this is a good starting point. I do feel sometimes, though, that like some of the Town Manager Office goals I want to kind of promote, like the relationship with the board somehow is not really in here. It's really very staff-focused right now. Your list, Carrie, specifically your list. And I do have this sense of like, there must be some way we can articulate the sort of, and the rest of it, you know, type of thing as a goal. And I don't know how to do that without sort of saying, oh, and here's 20 pages of more goals. So, and do others have comments?
I think these goals, whatever they are, should be no more than two or three pages.
Right, well, and that's indeed, I mean, she's got a page and a third at the most, at the moment.
Yeah, well, that's about the right scale because there's a limit to how much you can achieve, if, at least if you define the achievements in a, with reasonable scope.
So.
I'm a little bit confused about the work we're doing now. So one of our goals is to evaluate departmental goals and review progress with the Town Manager at the beginning and the end of the fiscal year. So is that, so these.
But more fundamentally, we just signed an employment agreement. I just signed an employment agreement on behalf of the Board.
Yes.
That said that includes a clause for variable compensation that's based upon achievement of goals, which we are supposed to negotiate with the Town Manager by July 15th of the year.
And that's.
And so that blue matrix is what I interpret. I hope I interpret it correctly.
Yep.
As the list that we would then come back at the end of the year and do our evaluation and say, yeah.
This is for performance evaluation.
For performance evaluation. So that, I mean, clearly, we have the broader scope of, yes, we want the town to have clear goals, the department, you know, in concert with our goals that we have already codified.
Okay.
Okay, but the reason that we have to get it done, like, quickly is because of this employment agreement.
Okay. And then the departmental goals is a whole separate exercise?
Well, I think it's.
Because that's one of our stated, explicitly stated, goals.
Right, and I think that we are, in some sense, starting that process or going to be able to go through that process is, meet our goal by having a look at these goals.
Yep.
Yes. But I would suggest that we, tonight, not try to, to deal with these. On the other hand, I think that we should take this set of goals that we just got.
Yep.
Okay, and now maybe formulate our feedback.
Good idea.
And I would encourage, actually, providing feedback to the Town Manager in the interim, if possible, to just give the opportunity for us to make fast progress on getting to a final set. And in this most important ones, like I said, for timeframe, I'd still love to be able to come up with a general sense at the next meeting on the 11th of, okay, this is the scope of the goals that we want Carrie to, you know, be, her evaluation to be based upon. They don't have to be final then. I think we've got agreement that they don't have to be final then, but I think that we need to kind of know where we're aiming.
Thank you.
So Matt.
Carrie.
I do have some specific comments on the goals. It's on page 112, I guess is where it starts. And I really agree about trying to make measurable, but I also really like the tone here that Carrie is using strategic ideas like optimizing performance, succession planning, emerging leaders, setting a formal, remote work policy. I think that's a measurable one.
Yes.
Definitely Carrie is on the right track, looking at global picture here. And a couple of questions that I had are on the DEIB section, conduct an audit, the middle one, conduct an audit of internal policies and practices. I guess my question on that one is, how can that be done and maintain the confidentiality? You've got open meeting law and you've got confidentiality of the sum of what the staff might say. How can this goal be achieved?
Well, this would be a departmental goal. It's done by staff, right? It's not us.
No, I think it's a consultant that comes in.
Right.
I think we would need to define in public what would, and not get into a weird gray, we would know upfront what was happening with that. Wondering if maybe by the next meeting, if Carrie would have an idea of how we could approach that. So we stay within the open meeting law, but we staff freely and there's confidences.
So you mean that the output of anything needs to be a public document? I think that's what you're.
I don't know. I don't know anything about the answer to this. I just have a question. How can we do it? How do you do an audit and maintain the confidentiality?
I mean, I think that DEIB audits are, it's a thing that you could go actually send out a request for proposals on and people will bid on it. I mean, it's a known thing to do.
Yeah, but how do you do it in the public sector? So I just would like.
I'm sure they're done.
Okay, all right. So that was one of my questions. And the other one is, what is an automated agenda management system?
What is it?
Yes.
So it would be, it's an online agenda packet tool so that the packet is uploaded and maintained by software. It's easily searchable. It's fully accessible. It can include elements of making it accessible to persons with low vision. It could translate into a variety of languages. That, those are the general aspects of that type of program.
And is this something that you and the staff definitely want to do or you're, think you're going to evaluate whether to do?
Well, it says evaluate and implement.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's something that is used pretty widely in other communities. I think it has a lot of benefit here. And, you know, we don't, we don't, we haven't received a proposal. I'm not sure how much it costs. I think it is likely something that we would put forward in the capital plan if the timing is right. But I think, I think there's a lot of benefit to having that type of system.
Okay, so I do, I do see that in your goals, then. You do have some very specific, overreaching, strategic ideas, both in goals. I definitely correct that. And I think we can finish it.
Okay, just, are there comments from other Board members about, are these the right categories or do we have missing categories or areas of emphasis that want to change? I guess that's the main thing that's on my mind right now. You know, that once we know kind of what those are, filling in the specifics is not straightforward, but it's certainly relatively easy.
So one way, I'm, I do recognize, you know, Carrie's comment about Carrie coming in at a higher level in terms of organizational structure and how it all operates and there are various pieces to this. I guess one, you said we'll come back to this. One lens I'm already thinking about is, I'm going to go back and look at the full evaluation tool that we use. I'm going to go back and look at the full evaluation tool that we used last year as a lens for, do I walk away, coming back and then looking at what Carrie's presented to us, you know, do I walk away with an overall sense that the total responsibilities of that position?
I think that that's the main thing that we need to understand. And not that we want to go, you know, I'm not suggesting that we had the right evaluation tool in the past, but that it is a point of reference, at least.
I would take that evaluation tool that we last used and burn it.
Well, okay, well, anyway, it's, you know, any, any way to try to cross-reference or understand the scope of the position and the goals that would be relevant for this particular fiscal year, that's what we're trying to do. And essentially, find if there's a gap so that we know we've got the scope covered.
Yeah, and another tool that I had previously suggested, again, just as a reference point, I had suggested that maybe we go back and look at the community, the job description that had come out of the community profile when we were looking for a Town Manager. Again, not for the specificity of it as much as the total scope of it and how that, does that capture what we're looking for in terms of.
Right, but in also, you know, with goals, we're not really trying to hear much evaluate character or, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
I think Linda's making a really good point. And one way that we can address that is to have a goal that's something like. that is to have a goal that's something like, the town manager will, you know, strives to help the board achieve their goals. And then we attach, you know, our goals, because our goals are all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, but how do you make the town manager's contribution to those goals concrete so that you could say, yep, they did it or not? That's.
That's gonna, that's right. That's what we have to figure out, right?
I think we try to make that her job, which I, by which I mean that I would really like to start with her conception of what her job is.
Well, that's what we have here.
And what she wants to achieve. And then we, then, then it's a process of, of kind of, of melding that into, into some of our expectations.
Well, I think that's what we're doing right now. So we've got her list, and I think that we need to produce that, that feedback.
And, and the other piece of it is that, you know, I was, I was really pleased to see the compilation of the department goals, and I know you want to talk about that more future point. But when I went through them, one of the first things I did was, okay, on, on the board's goals were to address the cell, cell coverage issue, right? Again, very specifically, that was on the board goals. Carrie captured it in her, you know, ARPA suggestions. But nowhere did I see it in a department goal where it's probably going to have to get carried out. I don't believe I did.
Actually, there is a, there is a goal, make and, you know, establish ARPA spending, because that's, that's something that you're going to do for FY23, right? I mean, you've already gotten started, so you've already got partial credit. But you can, you know, there, there, you've got to create the plans and, you know, that's something that's going to happen this year.
That's more an exercise than a goal.
It's in your scope of authority.
It sounds like a major, major initiative.
Yeah. Okay. And that would be a great example, I think, of what Terry was saying of, how does, you know, Carrie help us meet our goals, but that we can isolate her contribution, you know, as opposed to us fulfilling our obligation to the, our goals. So. Is, is that enough for tonight's discussion? And, and like I said, so the feedback would be, give feedback to Carrie, take, take your assessment of, is there appropriate coverage here? Any gaps that you see? Suggestions for refinement on her goals? Send to her for her to compile for our review at the next meeting.
Great.
Okay?
Good. And when are we going to decide on the mutually agreeable extension?
So we did tonight informally that we, let's say that we go to the, well, one more meeting to the end of July, because after that, we're really into the new fiscal year. We don't want to delay beyond that. So we, we would take ourselves to that, that next meeting, the 25th. Okay. Can we move to committee nominations now? Clerk, could you read the?
Yes. Let me just find them. Okay. Okay. Joshua Lee of 65 Everett Street, to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission; Anita Techley of 260 Virginia Road, to the Concord Local Cultural Council; Pauline T. Reeve of 429 Williams Road, to the Concord 2025 Executive Committee; Frederick Ryan of 211 Park Lane, to the Concord 2025 Executive Committee.
Okay, thank you. And committee appointments?
Okay. Move to appoint Lois Suarez of 34 Everett Street, Department 10B, to the Pollinator Health Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30th, 2025; Rebecca Lamaitra of 3 Abbott Lane Unit 10, to the Concord Historical Committee, for a term to expire April 30th, 2025; Mary Wren Vanderwilden of 158 Simon Waller Road, to the Library Committee for a term to expire 30th, April 30th, 2025; and to extend Stephen Ledoux's recent appointment as the Minuteman Regional High School Representative, from a term ending 4/30/2025 to a term ending 6/30/2025, to be consistent with the terms of the Minuteman Regional High School Agreement.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Okay, Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Ackerman, aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this stage, it's late in the evening, but if there are some important liaison updates, I'd like to hear them. Ms. Hartman?
I've got one from CMLB. They voted a power cost adjustment. Apparently, the price of natural gas is spiking due to the war in Ukraine. Because 20% of power is bought on the spot market, that's impacting power costs. They're going to institute a five cent per kilowatt increase starting July 1st, and that will be about $30 to $40 on the average household electric bill.
Okay. Costs are escalating.
Costs are escalating.
Any other liaison remarks? I, I guess I can just say that the Financial Audit Advisory Committee met and looked at the town and school audits, the management letters for those. They looked good. There were a few comments, small, small comments. There are new standards that are being applied, and we are also going to engage the same firm as we've had for some time for the next three years. And the other thing is that the school committee met and they went through the assessment process that's given through, from kindergarten through 12th grade students, and the specialist education requirements and action plans around that. It was quite impressive, a lot of technical data. But the other item of significance is that they decided to change the evaluation process for the superintendent from an annual to a biannual evaluation, skipping this year, but having an informal check-in, midpoint check-in this year, with the full evaluation to occur next year. Apparently, this is in line with some standards that are used elsewhere. And the DEI Commission had approved their letter to the schools regarding the concerns of Metco parents and the sort of handling of all of that. And so those are updates. Linda, do you have some?
Yeah. I actually listened to the recording of the MMA webinar that was presented by MIAA on insurance risk, and I highly recommend everyone look at that, in particular halfway into it, items that are pertinent to a lot of employment and employee issues. Found that very helpful. You heard part of what was discussed at the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. We have another extra meeting that's been scheduled for this week to deal with some legal documents related to Assabat River Bluffs projects before the closing of that property.
Okay.
The CPC had their information meeting. There were no potential applicants that showed up. Keith did mention some housing issues, but no other members of the community or departments or who showed up at that particular meeting. That actually has happened in the past, because the June meeting comes so soon after, relatively soon after town meeting closing. But there will be another information meeting in August, and the applications are due in September. So if anyone is listening, please keep those deadlines in mind. They come quickly. The, they did vote on a new chair, and Diane Proctor will again fulfill the role as chair on the CPC. And Burton Flint, who has now come on as a select board appointee to that committee, is vice chair. And, sorry, I, I'm not remembering any of the other.
Okay.
Appointments for that committee.
Mr. Dane?
I might mention that Mary and I are following up on the Conservation Law Foundation versus Barnstable-Mashpee lawsuit. And actually, we are having a Zoom conference with the attorney who pursued that case tomorrow afternoon. This is the case in which it involved the septic systems on Cape Cod and the pollution of Cape Cod Bay and Nantucket Sound because of the inadequate review of, of septic systems and their effect on the environment. And we think that that may have some significant applicability to our White Pond situation in that it will be determined, the, the regulations that will come out of this will determine the responsibility of their residents to have septic systems that do not pollute water, water systems. On the 250th Anniversary Committee, we now have, we've had seven meetings. We have nine subcommittees and 50 people now involved in subcommittees of the executive committee. And we have been in, we have formed liaisons with the National Guard, with, with the Minutemen, with our state committee member, Mike Lawson, with, with Susie Berry, the select board member from Lexington, and to, and the, and Simone Montleone, the, the director of the National Park, to put together a program that will be something that will, the town can be proud of in two and a half years from now.
Henry, did you say 50 volunteers? Five, zero?
Yeah, 50, yeah. 50.
Yep.
And two of our subcommittees, two of the nine subcommittees have already scheduled meetings of their subcommittee members.
Okay.
Wow, fantastic.
Yes.
Can I just add one more for the record? At the White Pond Advisory Committee, I did bring up the topic of rewriting the charts.
Okay. Carrie, did you have any liaison updates?
No, I was at the Board of Health meeting when we did the 2229 report, so Barbie's gone over that tonight.
All right, thank you. We don't have any correspondents in our packet this week, but I can open the floor now to public comment. If you would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature Zoom and unmute your line. I'm not seeing any. Okay. So we'll move to adjourn.
So moved.
And actually, yeah, okay, roll call, vote, I guess, though. I think I can just adjourn. We have no more business that's published. There's nothing more we could really talk about. So, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.